I call to order the September 14, 2020 business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Bolton, the pledge?
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Present.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you. Members of the public who wish to be heard during the board meeting must raise their hands to speak during the first 10 minutes after the start of the meeting. Please do so now. Announcements and hearing of the public will directly follow the superintendent's presentation. The board continues to encourage employees of the district to direct all questions, concerns, and comments regarding district plans and processes to your building leadership, your building representative, or the district safety hotline. Individuals who raise their hands after the first 10 minutes of the meeting will not be recognized to speak during this meeting. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, September 2, 2020, and the business meeting, September 2, 2020. Okay, Ms. Bates is motioning. I need a, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Morosky, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Ms. Bolton is Chair of the Finance Committee. Please present the August 26, 2020 Audit Committee Report.
Thank you very much, and I will do so. We had a number of reports, and the, topping the first item was a report on the audit regarding internal controls. Federal work on that audit will begin, I think, today and last until about the end of December. We also had a report of another follow-up and monthly monitoring of the management letter response regarding HR and benefits issues, and Mr. McDowell and members of the HR staff reported, and I think did a great job presenting their action plan to the audit committee, and they will continue to do so. The internal auditor, Lauren Roberts, presented her goals for the year, and that her goals were accepted. And also, she re-mentioned that the audit committee had wanted an expansion of the audit, internal audit office, and she is waiting until the hiring freeze has ended before she makes that additional position available. Also, we are pleased to say that she was also continuing her work in the district's three-year strategic plan, and her emphasis is number four in our strategic plan, which is optimizing capabilities. And she has an entire listing and chart work and action plan as to how to do that. It was also suggested by, I believe, one of the audit committee members that one of the areas of risk management and assessment be conducted regarding the risk possibilities for and involved with remote learning. And she thought that that should be added, and she thought that it fitted within one of the categories she'd already listed out. And then, what we also heard a bit about was the Cincinnati Preschool Promise group, as well as CPS's membership on that, and the audit committee heard a report regarding the proposed resolution for or between the two bodies regarding carryover money and how one must dedicate that. And we should be following up on that, and frankly, we've not gotten a report back on that. I think we were supposed to be talking about that tonight, but I'm not sure that we are scheduled to do so, so I might be bringing that back up, because I know we have our combined meeting coming soon. The other parts of this were, I think, kind of normal. We did share that problem or that issue of the legal case out of northeastern Ohio regarding trying to sue regarding vouchers. And then also, there was interest as well by the audit committee to talk in terms of what COVID costs are, what COVID risks are, and there was a particular interest in talking in terms of the personnel piece of leaves and what, how leaves cost and how we are able to meet the new demands and challenges regarding COVID. So I report the audit committee once again. I am so thrilled and with the, and I think that other two finance members would agree, so thrilled with the quality and the insights that that community audit committee provides for us. So I submit and hope for approval.
Okay, thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments? Okay, I do have one comment regarding the topic around the proposed resolution. Ms. Bolton, and you are right in that it has been recommended as one of the agenda items for Preschool Promise. There's a couple of preliminary steps that need to occur just to get ready for that, but you are correct in that there needs to be some level of discussion about that. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, thank you very much. I almost kind of moved to revise the minutes because I didn't see it, you know, dominating as it did in some of the discussion. And I do know that General Counsel and Treasurer have been involved with working through it, and that would be great for us to be able to have some knowledge as to how to proceed. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thanks. All right. Ms. Bowers is Chair of the Student Achievement Committee. Please present the September 4 minute.
Thank you, President Jones. We met on Friday, September 4, a few days ago. No, well, about a week ago, I guess. But we, we had a robust, we had a lot of presentations, and we got it done in under an hour. So our first person, our team, was Assistant Superintendent Bunty, who I kept trying to deputize for some reason. I don't know why. I kept referring to her as Deputy Superintendent Bunty, but nevertheless, she talked a lot about distance learning, and especially in lieu of all the COVID and how teachers are being trained and how they're being supported and how they have access to ongoing training, synchronous and asynchronous. She did present, agreed for the multiple opportunities for teachers that could coincide without it being a burden to them to participate in training through launch ad. She showed us a chart with dates for team-based, for intro to different map growth and just different areas for teachers and building lead ones and the synchronous, as already expressed. She talked about the high school level opportunities for teachers and also the elementary opportunities for professional development training. What I was excited to hear about was the, to date, 103 courses that were offered, primarily in the socio-emotional learning curriculum that had been opened up for teachers during the opening week when they returned to school. And I believe to date, there've been about 5,112 participants and over 26,000 contact hours that have participated in the professional development, and I thought that that was really, really good. Moving on to advanced placement expansion, Mr. Hoover, Ms. Campbell, and Ms. Morales, that team presented to us a very detailed overview of how the district has been progressing regarding advanced placement. And just to reiterate, that is on our strategic plan. I believe it's Measure 1A, up under Measure 1A. And so, what the identification is decreasing the racial economic, the outcome is decreasing racial economic and gender disparities in advanced placement courses by increasing the number of African-American and multiracial students taking AP courses. So Mr. Hoover explained that there were some barriers for the end of the year in the spring with students really obtaining what they needed as far as like devices and things. That was kind of a somewhat of a trial for them. But he said the greatest barrier to AP enrollment and outcomes is the credit deficiency. Okay? And so, when I, when I see credit deficiency, that tells me that people are not passing the AP test. And when I look at the chart that he gave us, what it looked like was last year, there was 1,680 students who took AP courses. This year, there were 1,604. So there was a decreased number of students that took them from last year to this year. I'm sorry. Fiscal year 1819, fiscal year 1920. And then, when we get more in-depth, it was almost like a rabbit hole. So we got more in-depth, and I started looking, we as a team or committee started looking at the passage score. And if I remember incorrectly, we talked about proficient as anything three or higher for assessment. And then what it looked like on the chart was that our African-American students were not performing at a proficient level. So the numbers were very concerning. Today, we went over that, what that looked like, and they want to come back. Ms. Campbell said that she would get a better number as to even if we're on target or moving toward the target for our advanced placement with 50% of our African-American. We need a demographic breakdown that I don't think she had that data for us at that particular time. But it was discouraging for the fact that it was good that our ELL learners are not that much under our African-American students, but just the fact that African-American students are still at least over one point less than our, than the Caucasian counterpart students. And then we're just, we're under our IAP and 504 plan students, which is good for our IEP 504 plan students, but not really good for our African-American students. And so distinguishing all of that was part of our discussion as well. And I believe Board Member Morosky, we even talked about how to scale back maybe some AP courses before even middle school years, because not knowing the number of African-Americans that were actually in this group of 1,604 and then being prepared for the test sooner than waiting until seventh grade or even ninth grade. We talked to Ms. Morales, did a good job explaining to us about the pipeline, the AP pipeline from A W language, World Languages. And so she had talked about the Academy of World Language. She talked about some AP courses in eighth grade for ME that that's kind of being looked at. She also explained about how there's going to be an extension of some French and Spanish classes at Aiken and Withers and Dater. And I thought that those would be good for what she identified as heritage languages. And I thought that that was, that was very good. Let me see, Assistant Superintendent Murphy talked about the STEM Power Girls program, went through the Women's Club, and I thought that that was huge. And if I remember correctly, last year at the Children's Museum, that some of our girls, the ladies participated in STEM activity or event or celebration. And I'm remembering that, and I just thought that this summer, some of the girls participated in the AP boot camp and the commitment from the Cincinnati Women's Club with our girls and mentoring and that's what I thought is a great partnership. Let's see. All right, College Credit Plus Assistant Superintendent Murphy gave us some great news about, to date, we have 487 students who are currently signed up for, are actually participating in CCP. And I believe those numbers are straight from UC because what she reported was that Cincinnati State had not really started their, they had a delay in start, because I think they had a water main break or something on their campus. So we were not able to count those students as starting. But we were up 80 students more than we were this time last year who were signed up for College Credit Plus courses, and I thought that was huge. But with the idea that Assistant Superintendent Murphy said there was 521 letters of intent from students who said they wanted to participate. So I was excited to hear that. I was also excited for her to explain to us that there are more CPS teachers that are being certified to teach College Credit Plus courses, which will allow students to remain on their, in their own buildings, at their high schools, taking the classes, and which could cut down on some of the barriers of transportation, or maybe some students who need a little bit more support and guidance, they could take it on and get the support on the high school campus. So I was glad to hear that. Moving on to kindergarten readiness, Vera Brooks was able to give us a whole bunch of details about the kindergarten readiness and enrollment, the online registration enrollment, the phone interviews had limited. I'm sorry, Mr. Morosky, are you waving your hand at me? Mr. Morosky? Okay. All right. She said that the online registration, phone interviews had limited parent contacts, and she actually, actually said that parents were requesting in-person, face-to-face contacts for the, during the enrollment. She says since March 2020, kindergarten transition has been complete. And as of September 3, so I'm assuming this number might be different, that there were 1,177 preschoolers enrolled in power school, and the goal for the district this year is 1,800. She even feels that we may surpass that. She said that within the pandemic, her staff has actually been able to meet the needs of the families as necessary. She did report that the ODE has said that we could not test, update, we cannot test CRAR, could not be done remotely. And she said that the state has said that's a violation of test security to transmit KRAR items via video conference. What she did say was that their teachers are gathering information through an observational rubric and using other ways to maintain information, using instruments such as age and the stages and other things to help identify students being ready for kindergarten. One of the things that she focused on also was early childhood focus for this year is literacy and language, math, and socio-emotional learning. She updated us on a pacing guide to align the distance and blended or in-person instruction. She talked about the content of CPS TV for early childhood. She said that twice a week, teachers are actually gaining support through conversation with other staff with areas that they're having some struggles with, or even just to provide some feedback, engage each other for support. And then she talked about, a lot about partnerships, strong partnerships that we have, that we're having in the community around our early childhood. And lastly, I gave an update around the naming of the Cincinnati Digital Academy, which we're going to have a dialogue in Board Matters about, but I wanted to update the committee about the superintendent's conversation with the Gilligan family, who was, who was okay with the Cincinnati Digital Academy being named after Governor Gilligan. And then she, I think what we're going to discuss in Board Matters is more in-depth of where we are regarding next steps, and if the board is ready to approve that once we have a conversation. I think Mr. Hoying is prepared to begin a letter to talk about the details of what needs to be in that letter. And then Deputy Superintendent Amott brought to the committee's attention that Rising Star, the Mozart preschool that's located in Westwood, it needs to have, by state, it needs to have a name other than us identifying as Mozart. And so we need to have that discussion also later on in Board Matters. This committee played around with a couple of names, and it was reiterated to us that Rising Star was always the beginning of whatever the name is going to be to identify as preschool. And so we can have further discussion with that. But she, I think she needs, that's kind of like a time, time-sensitive matter as far as her getting that information to the state. And that is my report. Any committee members have anything that I left out that they want to add? Ryan or Mike? Nope? Okay. I submit these minutes as recorded.
Do board members have questions or comments? Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, just the AP. I know this is something we feel strongly about from an equity standpoint. It's a long, long time coming, and it's difficult always to do these sorts of things. To say like I usually do, until we have four, five, and sixth grades being exposed to more college preparatory work, we're not going to get those numbers up. And everyone must be exposed to that kind of rigor. And I just think that we've done some great things in curriculum. I think we'll see the results, but we've got to be looking at our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade to get them even ready to get into the seventh and eighth grade. So AP starts long before grades 10 and 11 and 12. So thanks for staying on it, and appreciate both the administration and the committee doing that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments, board members? Okay, Mr. Morosky, Ms. Chair of Policy, please present your September 4 Committee Report.
Thank you, President Jones. Policy Committee met on Friday, September 4, at 3:30 PM via Blue Jeans. The first thing we discussed were proposed changes to Policy 5200, which is attendance, which I have a resolution tonight. I'm prepared to read and hopefully receive passage. A lot of the language is Ohio, State of Ohio language, ODE. I requested that General Counsel blue line our edition so that you could see that the 90-plus, 95-plus percent of it is just state language. There is a couple CPS things. That's again why I asked it to be blue and red lines, so y'all would know the difference. Anyhow, we'll see that later on the agenda. A few things I'll just point out that I think were highlights. Dr. Carrie Bunger, our Director of Positive School Culture, presented the changes, the proposed changes. She stated changes need to be made before the start of school, and those changes related to the district's remote learning plan that had been submitted to ODE, meaning the changes need to happen yesterday, similar to the timeliness of the Mozart naming. Again, this isn't anybody's fault. That's my editorial comment. It's just the nature of how things have been going. And so now, this is something that hopefully we can get done tonight. Couple other things I want to point out, won't read all this to you. A copy of the recommended revisions, of course, were in your packets and available in the board office upon request. For the public's note, the committee expressed concern over the language being so procedural. Normally, our policies aren't quite as procedural. You know, we tend to stay high level, and then superintendent dictates procedure. It's not really our business. Due to the importance of the policy, Mr. Hoying, our General Counsel recommended language contain the detail at the least for the remainder of this year and create a procedure as the district continues to monitor for COVID-19, to which the committee agreed. Lastly, Ms. Bunger, Mr. Hoying informed the group and language on how to report attendance for hybrid, remote, and in-person learning is from ODE, which again, I've already stated. So that is, that attendance policy 5200, we will ask for a vote on that later for the changes. The anti-racism policy, which everybody is familiar with and which we've talked about a few times, we'll continue to talk about until it's signed, sealed, delivered after a lot of robust community input and input with the board. The next time you will see a draft of this will be in October, and that's because Stephanie Scott, our Assistant General Counsel, and Crystal Boyle, our Director of Communications, have been working with the task force in the community and other members of the public to garner feedback. Right now, the committee will recall at our last meeting, the minutes once passed dictated a committee of 21. 19 of the 21 showed up to the first sort of meeting of the minds. Three parents, two CPS parents, three CPS staff, two at-large community members and CPS alumni. African-American Chamber, all in Cincinnati, and Greater Cincinnati Foundation, Center for Closing the Health Gap, Children's Hospital, Preschool Promise, Urban League, and the YMCA and YWCA were represented there. You have a copy of the feedback. Again, I'm not going to read it all to you, A, because I don't want to insult your intelligence, and B, I think we have a long meeting. I will point out highlights, though, of sort of repeated items, I think, that were stated over and over. One was, you know, are there specific racist policies that we should be working to eliminate as we go forward, i.e. dress code? Not my comments, the comments that I saw here repeated. So another one was who will administer the equity assessment. One that was said over and over again is where will anti-racism work show up in the organizational structure? To my knowledge, CPS currently does not have a person on the leadership team dedicated to equity and inclusion. That's also was worded as like diversity officer. That comment took a bunch of different forms. And then one was curriculum that I know Ms. Bolton will be proud of, because in STACK, the past two years, we adopted a number of new curricula that were extremely diverse and representative of our community. But it's still worth, I think, looking at more, right? And we talked about that a lot the past few years. So curriculum popped up a lot. So that is in your packet. I just wanted to point out those highlights. Ms. Scott reported the goal is to have an updated draft of the policy to present, I'm sorry, I lied, at the November 6 Policy Committee meeting. So after that, of course, then whatever that new draft is, will be a Board Matters item at the board meeting after that. I shouldn't be so presumptive. I will add it as a Board Matters item. I assume people will want to talk about it. Lastly, there was a resolution proposed that I suggested we table, and the committee agreed. And I would love feedback if there is any, if people think differently about this. You may recall some time ago, when Mr. Davis, Ozzy Davis, was on the board, we acknowledged support for a Gulf Manor nondiscrimination ordinance. This was a year ago plus. And we did that, and we noted that we supported it. Well, now, it is being put on the ballot through referendum. There are people in Gulf Manor from the Orthodox Jewish community who are not supportive of it because it doesn't specifically call out religious exemptions. So by comparison, the City of Cincinnati's nondiscrimination ordinance calls out specifically religious exemption. This one does not. And it is on the ballot in November, and our friends in Gulf Manor asked for another resolution of support. The decision was, you know, we've support, we supported it in the past in that it wasn't necessarily something we felt the need to get involved in today. As it's on the ballot, we have things on the ballot, and it didn't, it didn't strike us as something we needed to take a stance on via resolution, since we had already supported the resolution itself. So that's the end of the minutes. And again, if there are comments on the nondiscrimination, again, in summary, we have supported it. We elected not to re-support it, for lack of a better term, being that it's on the ballot through referendum and that there's a lot of other things going on in the district, to be perfectly frank. We support nondiscrimination, but didn't feel the need to get involved in that level at this time. I present the minutes as written.
Okay, do board members have questions or comments? And I myself have a couple. Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. This is Mr. Morosky. I just, not for tonight, but could I get some time with you to hear more of the history of that anti-discrimination policy? It's just new information, and I want to make sure you understand it.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I'm going to repeat what I think I said last time. The board writes policy and adopts policy. Getting the community input is essential and critical, and especially as it is representative of diverse and experienced folks and groups. So I would like, prior to that November next draft, I think there should be a board discussion in October based upon where we are now. And I just feel more comfortable that that way we can own it. And again, board writes the policy, and I would hate to get so far down the line that we might be in a direction that we may not want to go, and then it becomes actually a, you know, a report of criticism back and forth. So I think it's great. Keep up the wonderful work, but let's do have a board discussion. That proved very useful when we were putting the equity policy together. But October would be great. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton, you are speaking of the anti-racism effort, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. All three of these committee reports were pretty robust. Okay, I just want to be clear. All three of these committee reports were pretty robust and I'm a little fuzzy on some, but thank you. That was point clarification. Any other questions or comments? I do, Mr. Morosky, you referenced earlier in your comments, you said something was going to be discussed tonight or needed to be. Did I, what did I, I, I'm not sure what that was. I didn't capture what that was.
The resolution amending Board Policy 5200 on attendance, there's a resolution, yeah.
I got you. Okay. And then my last question is, so the task force that has been developed by Ms. Scott partnering with.
And Ms. Boyle.
And Ms. Boyle with policy. And then the superintendent has an initiative and has been working on this for a long time. Where do these intersect or align? And if they don't, they should, is my suggestion. So there should not be two separate paths around this. And I'm saying that because, you know, as you all know, we've received hundreds of emails and text messages and from our community. And there are people who are interested in at least providing some level of input or feedback. There, there is a youth group that I know that, that wants to be able to be involved. So trying to figure out which way to, which direction to point them in has been challenging. So in some cases, you know, I'll send it to the superintendent just because it's an operational kind of thing. But then I'm not sure how the Policy Committee's efforts should or will align with what's currently going on.
I'll give my two cents. Yeah, it makes sense. I'll give my two cents and I would defer the superintendent to, you know, obviously get her insight on this, but so the students that sit on the task force with Ms. Boyle and Ms. Scott are students that I know Ms. Mitchell has been working with and that Josh Harden has worked with. So there's certainly overlap. I would say, you know, the task force is specifically and explicitly tasked, pun intended, I guess, to work with this policy and get feedback for us to discuss, to Ms. Bolton's point. And it's a good point. It should happen in October, so we'll throw that on the agenda. And the superintendent's, I think, is more broad, but I would ask the superintendent if she wants to, you know, give her two cents on that. But I know there's crossover, at least on the student level, but I, that's all, that's all I know.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if superintendent, did you want to respond to that?
Yes, so I pulled together a group of young people representing every high school and this really came out of the Speak Up, Speak Out group. And those young people identified a set of demands and there were seven demands that I did give to the Board during a presentation, maybe a month or so ago. And so this group has a explicit focus on racial justice within CPS and within the community. I'd be happy though to talk with Ms. Boyle about how not to duplicate the work and how we may be able to fold this work into one group so that we don't have different groups doing different things. So just a thought.
Okay, and, and I, I'm saying this because I, I think, I think everybody, it's all well-intended, well-intentioned. And I, I understand that, but in this particular case, there is one group, a student group out of one of our high schools that is, is really voicing that they haven't been heard and they want to be heard. And I'm trying to figure out where do I direct that email? So, you know, should I direct them to you, Superintendent, or? My, I, I don't know who to direct them to, to be honest. That's why I'm asking where the parallel is. If, if, Mr. Morosky, if, if you are, if your, if the effort of policy is specific to this task force, then it might be more appropriate to direct it, Superintendent, to you. I'm asking a question. Yeah?
I, I mean, you could direct them to us or meaning Ms. Boyle, Ms. Scott, or to the superintendent through the Speak Up, Speak Out. Either way, I know the group that you're talking about and they have ended policy meetings and they've spoken and we've taken their feedback and placed it directly in the policy. So they are being heard through the Policy Committee meetings. But that's not to say we don't, I'm with you. We need to get their voice more robustly wrapped it, wrapped in there. So I would send them to Ms. Boyle, honestly, because Ms. Scott is sort of, you know, on the, on the legal end of things, like task was sort of collecting the language and putting it into the policy. Ms. Boyle is really, you know, the engagement and getting them together. So without talking too out of turn, because that is not, I'm not their boss. I would probably say Ms. Boyle would make the most sense.
Well, and, and thank you. I appreciate that and I can do that. I think for me, I needed to have clarity because as we respond, when they send it to the Board and we respond as a Board, I want to give clear direction on, on where, where they could be heard. And I, so I'll do that. I'll forward them. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions, any other questions or comments? Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, we have, we're down, we're, we're at the item for presentations and I believe Fresher Wagner has the first one and that will be followed by the superintendent's presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So the agenda item says that it's a presentation and a submission of a final budget. We're not quite done with the budget yet, so I'm just going to give you an update and we're hoping to have a final budget to you by the end of the month. You go ahead and set the next slide. So two thing, major things to talk about tonight. The first one being the appropriations resolution that's on the agenda for approval tonight. And then the second one being some of the funding challenges as we are finalizing the budget. Go ahead. Thank you. So just some things to consider. The Hamilton County Budget Commission deadline is October 1st and so we need a resolution, excuse me, approved before then, which is why we put it on the agenda for tonight. And we don't need to have a line-by-line budget in order to approve this resolution. This will give us a little bit of time to finalize and to react to decisions on the return to school models. Next slide. So just a reminder, some of the realities that we've been facing is that you did approve, adopt a 90-day appropriations resolution at the, at my recommendation because everything was so unknown in the spring and in the June when we typically do our resolution or appropriations. You also adopted a $625 million general fund budget target when we adopted the five-year forecast. And the rules that followed, that drove that forecast was to maintain a positive cash flow for fiscal year '22 despite having our revenues reduced and not to go for a new money levy before the end of the five-year cycle. I also wanted to note that we, in addition to the $625 million general funds, we will be receiving our allocations for state and federal grants, but it was about $81 million for next year. But that also includes unspent funds from last year and that will be an additional $29 million, which is $18 million higher than the previous year just because we were closed, we weren't spending money. So a lot of the savings due to closure were in our state and federal grants. So also another reminder, the instructional model that we chose to focus on at first was the first six weeks blended model, the two, two-day, three-day alternating weeks. But after the first six weeks of the school year, we were going to switch to a four-day a week for the last 36 and that was going to generate about $13 million in savings due to not transporting students for one day a week and not paying the civil servants for one day a week. That model also included an estimated $5 million in a holiday distance learning. Mostly same concept, transportation savings and then not having to pay civil servants during those time periods. That we also included a budget reduction of 179 positions that resulted in very small reductions in force. But also as a reminder, all the other models that we looked at had a couple hundred reduction in force position. And so we picked the one that was the least painful at that point. We still need flexibility and I've copied that twice. I apologize. We have a, making last-minute edits. But we still need flexibility and agility to what happens next in terms of if there's a spike and we have to react to it, or if there's individual school closures, so to speak. Next slide, please. Okay, so some of the things that are in consideration for this final model and budget to support that is the length of the calendar, number of days, how many closures we're going to have, what, what's going to have, what's happening with student enrollment and their attendance and engagement number? What staffing levels will we have based on enrollment? And then what will our leaves of absences be when, when we do, when students do come back into the building? Will we start seeing more leave of absences and how that will impact our finances? Well, also with transportation, we, we thought there would be savings, not realizing that the charter school, we would still be transporting the charters and the non-publics. And so that has an impact to, when we have changes. We didn't see as much energy and utility savings as we would have thought and especially with the opening of the school year with all the staff in the buildings that the lights are still on. They might probably not running as much water, but we'll, we'll be monitoring those. And because we're self-insured, there's a risk of increased medical expenses due to COVID. And we're always trying to gather community engagement and communication, but we're having to spend a lot more money on those things because of COVID with the policies changing, rules changing and just more communication needs to have. And then, of course, we've invested a lot of technology. We also considered would we have to rent extra space for social distancing? And then, of course, as often as I can, reminding that we may have to reduce more positions to balance the budget. Next slide. So on August 3rd was when the community data came out in terms of tracking the measures for determining whether we were going to be face-to-face or blended learning or distance learning. And the, so we're monitoring the E-curve, the positivity rate at that time was 7.7 and the Ohio Public Health Advisory System had us red on the verge of purple. I think we had one measure that was going to turn a server to purple. Thankfully, we started turning in the other direction. But at that time is when we made the decision to start the first five weeks of distance learning and then we were going to reevaluate as of today on those measures. And I believe that's in the next presentation. Next slide. So some of these, I've been adding to this list as time goes on and new challenges occur. And I failed to remind us, all of us, that the first challenge was already a reduced budget from last year. If you recall, we increased last year's budget to help support the first year of the strategic plan and that we already were going to have to cut our budget by $35 million to get down to a smaller target. It was at the time 647, but then when the state reduced our revenues, we had to drive down that target even further. So, and there's also the unanticipated costs of some of the things I talked about, but already our COVID-related costs have increased over $42 million despite the CARES Act 1 and 2 that would get us $18 million in support. And my next slide will have some details on that COVID costs. Concern about enrollment changes. So if enrollment grows, we're going to have to hire more staff with a limited budget. And then if enrollment drops, we could be overstaffed. Also mentioned before the, we don't know how many times we're going to be opening and closing individual buildings or classrooms and what that will do for finances or additional costs that we may need to incur. And then some potential changes to forecast revenue. So I forecasted in the May forecast that the state would probably issue another cut this year. Not, not all my colleagues did that. And so I'm going back right now and looking, relooking and doing like a mini revision to the forecast to see if that 625 target will stay the same. I hope to have that done by the end of this week. I'm, because the state doesn't have a formula, I'm concerned that if they see districts dropping in enrollment across the state, that they may start dropping revenues even though, because we don't have the guarantee to rely on anymore. I'm also concerned about if they make changes to the eligibility for charter ed choice that will have an impact, a negative impact on our funding. And then if we start seeing an increase in delinquencies, our property tax collections that we estimated. But we've only received our advances. I should be getting the settlement statement fairly soon so I can, I'll be able to determine how close we are. Here's a table that shows the COVID costs as of September 11th that we've committed, either encumbered or budgeted or spent already. I won't read every line for you, but you can see that the general fund is taking an additional 18.6 in costs. The CARES Act is funding 16 and a half. Then some of the shifts have been able, we were able to use student wellness money to help with the nurse expansion. And the ready-to-go kits is on the wrong column. I just noticed. It should be under the CARES column. So the CARES Act 2 was $2.2 million. That's helping to fund that $3 million ready-to-go kit. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so more considerations from one budget year to the next is that because we have been growing in enrollment, we've been expanding schools and classrooms as they grow. Spencer added 11th grade, hands expanded to second grade, LEAP, four and six. Gable Elementary, the Gable Montessori Elementary added three classes from nine to 12 and some preschool classrooms. And then we expanded, I think it was 12 English language learned teachers as part of our enrollment growth in our ESL population. So in addition to that, we had some strategic plan investments that were moving forward. Some of them were available to fund from the student wellness fund, but no. Opening up Mozart, opening up Lighthouse and expanding some nine, 9.6 counselors, I believe. Next slide, please. So what have we done so far to help with this budget? We've, we said last year, we saved about $2 million in transportation that we didn't do. And the facilities budget came in under a million dollars under budget. Some of that was utilities. We had the $18 million of unspent grant funds, so we're seeking guidance on how can we use that to help with this year. And then we deferred property acquisition. If you recall, we were going to issue a COPS borrowing and that was going to increase our debt payments by two and a half million. And so we're not doing that this year. There's an agreement to defer the science adoption, although I don't know exactly how much that was going to cost. And then we, if you recall, we cut $8 million with the vendor contracts and we, 179 positions that we were able to cut collectively $24 million out of the general fund budget. And then so far, we've received the 18.5 or 0.7 million that will help us cover some of the 42 million. Next slide, please. Some other unpredictable cost influencers. Once again, anything changing to tuition? And that might have a change in, resulting in larger transportation costs. And then just trying to gain financial efficiencies for our own transportation, which is really model-dependent because with social distancing on a bus, I'm concerned that might drive the need for more buses. Also very concerned about the leaves of absences because once a teacher goes out on leave of absence, even though it's unpaid, we're still sharing in that medical benefit rate and we have to buy a substitute to replace that teacher in the classroom. So, and we still don't know exactly when we're going to hear on the next federal funding act. Hoping to hear that soon in the next month or so. So what are our next steps? We spent all day today discussing budget options and next steps. So tonight I'm asking for the adoption of the appropriation resolution. So tonight I'm asking for the adoption of the appropriation resolution. The possible pivot to a new instructional model for the 28th, depending on the next presentation. I will file the Hamilton County Budget Commission required documents by October 1st. And then what we're working on starting tomorrow is we're looking at the reduced, recent reduced staff and program budgets to balance to this new adopted appropriation. So hoping to come back by the end of the month with a final budget. I think that was my last slide. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Okay. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. Treasure Wagner, let me know if this is the right time of the meeting or to do it later. But I wanted to understand more about what's in the resolution and like what it is that we're approving tonight. Is now the right time to ask that or should we talk about that later on?
Sure. The board policy authorizes me to spend money at the fund level. So there are different funds for different purposes. The general fund, we have a debt fund. We have a benefits fund. And so what you're approving tonight is the maximum level for each of those funds. And I filed that with Hamilton County so that I can continue to pay the bills. They're all included.
Okay. At a high level, it makes total sense. I think what I didn't understand was the $1.2 billion number at the bottom. Because it's being 625 million and 1.2 billion was a lot bigger. And so I was trying to understand.
So so maybe we can delay that question until it actually comes up and you can look at it, but 625 is just the general fund. Like the debt fund, for example, takes in property taxes that were from the bond levy and that goes directly into that fund. So all our debt payments come out of that fund. Fund 21 is where we do all the withholdings from paycheck. So all the tax payments come out of that fund. So there needs to be enough revenue in it or enough fund balance in it for me to pay those bills. All those things added up. Sometimes it looks, we don't have a billion dollars in revenue. Because when we transfer money from one fund to another, it's included in both funds.
That's, I think actually the withholdings example is really helpful because it's very clear why we need to do that. And that's definitely not revenue we have to spend. I think that, I think I'm good. I appreciate it.
Okay. Good question.
Okay. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Jones. My question is this really more procedural than anything? I realize there's nothing normal or average about this year. And I appreciate the clarity in the presentation, Treasure Wagner. Everything makes sense to me. I've looked through the resolution. I'm just curious again, noting that I'm well aware things are not normal, far from it. Will there be a budget hearing when the finalized budget is ready to go? And I think part two of my question is if we know anything about carryover yet.
So we can do a budget hearing, yes. If that's what the board would like to do. Happy to do that. We know how much potential carryover. And when you say carryover, you're talking about federal, state and federal grants?
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's, there was 29 million that was left unspent. And most of the funding sources waived their carryover rules, but not all of them. And so we have to wait for them to confirm their carryover values. Typically, we don't get those values until the end of September, even early October. But we have, we can make a good guess on what it is and try to use that to help.
It would be.
I'm sorry, we lost Mike. We lost Mr. Morosky. Okay, Mike, Mr. Morosky?
Did I freeze?
You did.
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can now, but we didn't hear what you said, the last comment.
It froze again.
There he goes again. Okay, we'll, we'll wait on him. So we, okay, go ahead, Mr. Morosky. I'm muted.
I'm so sorry. All I was going to say, thank you. I heard everything. You just didn't hear me, I don't think. I would just put out there, I think it would be a good idea to have a hearing of some kind when we're ready to do that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I agree with all the comments before. And I think the only thing that's got me kind of in knots, and I'm sure everybody else is just getting a final number of how many kids we have. And so, you know, when do we think we'll actually have that count? Because that's going to determine obviously a whole lot. And if we have lost, let's say a few thousand kids, this is probably going to be another completely different conversation altogether. So when do we think that we'll have that final, final number? To then be able to assess what the implications are?
You know, we talked about that today, but I don't remember exactly what they, we landed on. Superintendent Mitchell, are you there? Can you help me?
I am. So we do cover enrollment in the next presentation. And so we're going to give you some preliminary information, but it will not include all of the withdrawals. And so there are some kids who haven't shown up, but they haven't officially withdrawn or we haven't received any requests for their records to be transferred to another school. So we will, or district. So we'll be able to give you an update on that in the next presentation in a couple of minutes. And then give a more formal number in terms of where we are, we have landed as it relates to enrollment. Probably at the end of this month, so on September the 30th. But we have some preliminary information for you.
Okay. And if I could just add one last final comment to that. So I absolutely concur, we should have a budget hearing. You know, some community engagement around it because let's say that we have significant enrollment impact due to the pandemic. There's going to be some really difficult conversations and I think we owe it to our public to engage in that process. So thank you for that.
Of course. Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Thank you. Jen, when you closed out FY '20, how much was the carryover from the general fund closeout?
We ended, we ended the year with about 39 million in unencumbered, I'm sorry, encumbered funds that we hadn't paid out yet. So that has to be carried over. Now we're going through and reviewing because you know, a lot of the contracts, we stopped using, stop servicing. And so we're going through and trying to cancel all those, but it's a tedious task. At the end of September, we typically close them out. We have, we usually wait until all the federal grants have been filed for the year before we start mass closing encumbrances. So I'll have clear numbers at, by the end of the month, but there was we finished the year at 623 million in spend. We had a budget of 660. 39 million of it was committed, but not paid out. And then we had another 29 million in unspent funds for the grants.
Okay. And then another kind of specific question. How many vacancies? Do we know what positions were not filled versus what positions were cut?
I had to defer to Mr. McDowell for that one.
Okay.
Good evening. We have approximately over 200 positions. A lot of them fall within our early employees. We stopped while we were on our, our remote option with our students and learners. Kind of holding back on some of the paraprofessional positions. So we did not fill those. We also have some of the one-on-one paraprofessional positions that we haven't filled as well. It's about 215 positions total.
There's 215 vacancies. And, and we were still like in the audit committee, the internal auditor was still talking about hiring freeze. Are we still engaging in a hiring freeze?
We've been very careful as far as hiring for positions that we may have to come back and potentially look at eliminating in the future, depending on the model that we go with as the information indicated before.
Yeah, because I did notice in the, in the superintendent's recommendations, there was at least, it looked like a new site administrator that I thought didn't fit within the hiring freeze, but we can talk about that when we get there. It would be helpful, and I know Jen, you've pointed this out to me and reminded me that it's been Mr. Messer that over time has suggested this listing, if you will, of fixed costs. That no matter what model we use, especially if we're going to have a budget hearing, it would really behoove us to have a list of those fixed costs that are irregardless of whatever model we use. And I, I do think whatever model we go with, I, I think we do have to be very cognizant of, of the cost of that. And as many savings or deferred costs or whatever needs to be part of the consideration when we get there. But I'm still not quite sure about the, the closeout numbers, but I, at least I wrote down the specifics that you mentioned. And hiring freeze, we're sort of at a hiring freeze. And last question, have we restarted some of the vendor contracts that we thought we were cutting or did cut?
So based on our conversation, I went back through and compared the cut list. And I found a few that slipped through, so Dan is going to help me get those canceled.
Okay. And some, I mean, some make sense to go back and fix them or do them, knowing what we know. But, but I, it'd be great to have those, that, what we've already, what they say in the military, you don't pay for ground twice. And so we, it'd be great to have some of those numbers. Thank you very much.
Okay. So thank you for your presentation. We do have a resolution tonight on the appropriations. And then I also heard that we are, we are in agreement about having a budget hearing, making sure that we get the final approval on the next agenda and to have a budget hearing regarding all of this. Okay. All right. Anything else then regarding Ms. Wagner's presentation? Okay, so we're going to move into the superintendent's presentation and as she's preparing. I, I wanted just to throw in here or offer a suggestion that would cause us to just switch the order of the agenda. So we would, so my suggestion is, and I don't think we need an action to switch the order. But my suggestion would be that we hear the presentation from the superintendent. We follow that up with hearing of the public. Then we open up for discussion from the board discussion, which hopefully will lead us to some clear direction or, and decision for the superintendent to move forward. So I put that out there as a suggestion. Any comments about that or any other suggestions around how we might better manage that? Okay, so are we good with that? Can we do that?
That sounds good.
Okay. Anybody have any concerns about that? Okay, so we're going to ask the superintendent to introduce her presentation.
All right, thank you. So tonight's presentation is a follow-up conversation. So the board has been very committed to being able to use data to inform decisions. And in June, when the board made the decision to start with a blended model for the beginning of the school year, there was always a commitment to come back and look at the data in early August, which we did on August the 3rd. At the time that we looked at the data on August the 3rd, a decision was made based upon the health data for the city of Cincinnati to first start the beginning of the school year with distance learning. And then there was always a commitment to come back on September 14th to reevaluate the data. So tonight's presentation is an update regarding the data for the city of Cincinnati. I'm going to ask Sarah Turnbull Oliver, she's actually going to begin by giving some data information as relates to the four data points that we said that we would measure. I would also though like to begin to say that before Sarah comes on, we did put out to our parents and to the public an email and a robo-call about the groupings that students would be in in the event that we would move to a blended learning model or a person, in-person, face-to-face model at some point during the school year. So this was in no way, shape or form the intent to go around the decision today. If the decision today is made to move to in-person, then we couldn't start our planning tomorrow. We actually had to begin the planning several weeks ahead of time. So that information was just prompting parents to give them plenty of time to plan as we look at the data to make a decision to move forward. So at this, I might like to invite Sarah Turnbull Oliver to provide some data. Our deputy superintendent will provide some information as it relates to instruction. Our assistant superintendent, Susan Bunty, will provide some information about attendance and enrollment. And then I will come back with follow-up action items. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent. So as Ms. Mitchell mentioned, the administration committed to review the community health data tonight with the intention of being able to return to in-class learning with blended learning if our community health status improves. And so we have been monitoring several indicators on a daily basis and we have been updating the community health data on our district website and posting it on our district website weekly. And so tonight we'll be reviewing four of these indicators. The first indicator, as you're seeing on this slide here, is what we are looking for is sustained decline in new confirmed cases. And we are using the city of Cincinnati's epidemiological curve as you're shown, as is shown here. What we look for on this chart is, I know it's very small to see, but it is this small dotted line, a small black dotted line that follows kind of the top of the light blue columns. That is the seven-day moving average. And the reason we look at the seven-day moving average is because it accounts for any one-day anomalies or outliers in the data. So you can see on the chart here that we have the highest peak of new confirmed cases. It's actually right around July 4th, followed by a decrease. And then a smaller rebound, which actually started towards the last week of August. And then it starts to decrease again with the most recent dates. This is as of today. So the question is, does this represent a sustained decline in new cases? The guidance from the CDC for what indicators you look for, for continued reopening plan is you're looking at your last 14 days of data. And you're looking for two things, whether the 14th day is less than the first day and whether nine of the 14 days declined. So for our past 14 days, which is September 1st through 14, and if you, if you could zoom in on that last bit of, of the graph, you would see that the 14th day is lower than the first day. It's 32 compared to 35, seven-day moving average. And then there are actually eight of the last 14 days declined. So we are one data point away on this indicator for a sustained daily decline. The second indicator that you'll see on the next slide is the positivity rate. You may remember when we were presenting this data earlier and actually Ms. Wagner mentioned it. We were at 7.7% positivity rate for the city in early August, and we are now at 3.0% for the city and 4.3% for the county outside of the city. With the target being less than 5%. And so we are well within the target on this particular indicator. On the next slide is the third indicator, and that is the Ohio Public Health Advisory System, which is the color-coded system produced by the state, which color codes each county. And it's actually based on seven indicators itself. On August 3rd, when we last presented the data, we were rated red, which is the second highest category, second only to purple. And shortly thereafter, we were downgraded to orange for Hamilton County, and we have stayed in orange ever since. And the last indicator on the next slide. And the last indicator on the next slide is that we wanted to see an improved time to receive your COVID test results. And this is an important indicator to tell us that whether our testing systems in our region can meet the demand, which is really important to being able to identify and isolate positive cases. And so what this data shows, this is the newest data from the city, is that we're at an average length of around two days, which is improved from July. One additional piece of information on the next slide that our friends at Children's Hospital encouraged us to look at is the comparison of positive cases within our employee community compared to the larger community. And since we did ask every employee to take a COVID test and report the test to Human Resources, we do have this data. And as of now, over 4,900 employees were tested for COVID, and we had 16 confirmed positive cases since the date of August 17th. And that is 0.3% positive, which is a smaller, a smaller percent positive than in the larger community. And Ms. Amat will continue with the next portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Sarah. We can go to the next slide. We wanted to share with you the state requirements for the district to start weekly reporting. So starting last week, parents of students and our school staff are strongly encouraged to provide the district notice of any cases within 24 hours. Then we are required to notify the parents at schools and the Board of Health within 24 hours. Starting tomorrow, the Board of Health will report cases to the state each week on Tuesday. Then hopefully, we will have our first state report on Thursday. So the state will report out all districts every Thursday. So what we wanted to do before actually getting our hands on this data, we started to do our own investigation. So we looked up websites from individual school districts, universities, and also gathered information from the Inquirer. So what you see here are some local districts with the number of positive student cases, positive staff cases with the district total. We specifically looked at blended and in-person learning. So I will leave that up there for a little bit so you can take a look at those numbers. Thank you. Next slide, please. We also gathered information around our local universities, Miami, UC, and Xavier. Again, positive student cases, positive staff with the university Thank you. Next up, we have Assistant Superintendent Bunty, who will give us an update on student engagement and attendance.
Next slide, please. Good evening. We wanted to be able to share with you some numbers regarding student attendance. So if we take a look at student engagement, right now we have 30,676 students participating with us. As you may remember, they can participate through Google Meet and synchronous instruction. They can participate asynchronously through working on Schoology or through completing packets. We do know that we have 5,307 students with whom we have not yet made contact, but out of that number, 1,795, we have indeed been able to reach out to them. 700 of those need internet access, and we're working hard with Cincinnati Bell in order to obtain that. Of that total 5,300 number, 3,512 remain who we are looking for. So what are we doing? We recognize at the school level that each of our schools has what is known as a student support team comprised of principals, teachers, resource coordinators, paras, and security guards who are doing everything that they can to reach out to our students. After three unsuccessful attempts, those are, those student names are passed on to our social workers. If our social workers are unable to reach them, we started as of today, an attendance mitigation team, working in conjunction with Cincinnati Children's, where we are doing rapid tests to determine how we can increase these numbers even faster. I know there have been requests for disaggregated data. Please know that we are looking forward to presenting that to you at our next board meeting on the 30th. And now we have our superintendent, Superintendent Mitchell.
Thank you, Susan. Okay. So here are our next steps. So we are prepared to move forward on the board-approved blended learning model, which is the 2-3 model in terms of transportation and meals. And so this is the exact reason that we sent out the notices, so that in the event that it is decided that we would move to face-to-face, we would be ready. We also are prepared as it relates to the A-B groupings. And so we have gone through those groupings several times, including with principals, to make sure that the right complement of students are gathered together in terms of numbers as it relates to where your name falls within the alphabet. We've made some adjustments to make sure that we could limit the number of kids to get the six feet of social distancing. Walnut Hills is the only school that we could not do the, just specifically A-B grouping. It expanded beyond A-B, B-D groupings because of the size of the campus as relates to the classrooms, in addition to the number of students who attend Walnut. In order to get six feet of social distancing, we couldn't come up with just two groups. We had to actually break it up into four groups. If a decision is made to move to face-to-face instruction, we are also prepared to move forward with athletics. In terms of this week, we could move forward with non-contact sports, which would be golf, tennis, cross-county full competition, as well as intra-district games only, starting off this week. And then next week, move to contact sports in terms of full competition with limited people in the audience in terms of spectators. We are also prepared to stay in distance learning, if that is the decision that is made. We believe that it would be important for us to do another data check-in on September the 28th, which would be a little over two weeks past Labor Day, to look at that data. So although we've identified benchmark dates to look at data, please know that we receive reports on a daily basis, and we analyze that information. But we thought in terms of bringing back additional information to the board, September 28th would be another date to be able to bring information back. Next slide, please. So we want to say a huge thank you to the public, to our communities, our family members, our kids, because of people participating in social distancing, washing hands, wearing masks, and staying home when they are sick. You can see that we've actually, as a city, been able to meet three of the data points that we have been looking at very closely, and three of the four data points that we mentioned on the August 3rd meeting. So as Sarah Turnbull Oliver reported, in terms of the epidemiology curve, we are very close to having nine data points in terms of a downward trend. We've already met, as a city, the number of days that it takes to get a test result back, which is two days. In August, early August, it was up to 14 days. We are also out of the red, closely approaching purple all the way down to orange. And so we're excited and happy about that, in addition to the positivity rate for the city of Cincinnati, in addition to the fact that you can see the confirmed rate for Cincinnati public. In conversation with physicians in this area and looking at the data for other districts around Cincinnati, we are not seeing spread in those other districts as it relates to confirmed cases of COVID-19 as a result of opening school. So our message is that no matter what decision is made, we are ready to move forward. We have been preparing for this. But we do have three of the four indicators leading to the direction of being able to open with face-to-face instruction, if that is the will of the board. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to entertain any questions that the board members may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So right before the superintendent's presentation, I suggested that we move the hearing of the public up. But even before we do that, if there are any like clarifying questions, that board members, like burning questions that you might have, and I'm not talking about opening up for discussion, because we want to do the hearing of the public first. But if there are some burning questions, not discussion, but burning questions at this point, maybe we could start with that. Ms. Bowers, followed by Mr. Messer.
Yes. Thank you, President Jones. Superintendent Mitchell, can you clarify the indicator number four? I think I missed the, the full report on that one.
Yes. So I'm going to ask someone to pull back up the PowerPoint so that you can see the four indicators very clearly. The first slide, which is the epidemiology curve. And so on this, and while they're pulling it up, it shows the number of confirmed cases since March through September 14th. And so we were looking at not only the blue-colored bars, but we were recommended by the CDC to look at nine data points within a 14-day period. And so we have eight of nine data points moving down. And so that's when I say that we're close, but we haven't actually hit that, that measure. Sarah Turnbull Oliver, is there anything else that I'm missing that you'd like to be able to add to add more clarity to that?
No, I have nothing to add.
So if you look at those little bitty dots, and if you count backwards, we can count back eight data points that show a downward trend. What we do not have are nine data points. Originally, we were talking about 14 data points, and the CDC recommended nine data points as opposed to 14. So that is the fourth data point that we don't, haven't actually hit that. If someone will go to the next slide for me, in terms of the positivity rate, we're at three for the city, and we wanted to be in a range of four to five. Next slide, please. On this data point, we wanted to be level one or two. Level one is yellow, level two is orange. We are on level two, which is orange. Next slide, please. And on this, this shows the number of days that it takes to receive test results. And we were ranging anywhere from three days to 14 days. And now we, as a city, are all the way down to two days. And just recognize that the data points, these four data points that you're looking at, this is not as reported by Cincinnati Public Schools. We are getting this information specifically from the city of Cincinnati dashboard. Does that answer your question?
Yes, perfect. I think I was combining that 0.3% positive testing from the employees. I think I put that as number, as the days for positive. I got it confused, but that was clear. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Messer?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the update, and it is refreshing to see our, our district and our city, even the county, going a better direction than where we had initially been because we made this decision, whatever that was, back in June, and it felt like everything was downhill from there. So good to hear a little positive news. And I think my only question is, while these trends are good, I think there is some concern that that Labor Day holiday could result in a spike. If you watch the governor, if you listen to the news, when do we think we'll know any impact of that specifically, if that will impact our numbers? When, when do we expect to have that data? Like, when would we feel that in the results?
So I'm looking on my calendar, and I'm going to ask Sarah to pop in. We would probably have that information around the week of the 28th, because there's a little bit of a lag time in terms of getting the reporting of the data. But we would really want to look at 14 days past Labor Day, which was September the 7th. So if you go 14 days past that, go ahead, Sarah, please.
Yeah. No, that's right. So they, they say you have to wait at least two weeks. So that would be the 21st. So sometime between the 21st and 28th.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Bolton, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, just a point of clarification about enrollment. Wanted to know that, that does the total that was cited, the 30,000 or so, does that include preschool numbers?
Question. So Jeremy or Susan, can either one of you answer that for me?
Yeah, I'll try to jump in here. Yes, it does include preschool.
Thank you. Okay. And then the, my other question regarding that is the enrollment that would represent then a change of what we heard last time, which was that we were continuing along the projection of increased enrollment. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Morosky?
I think, I believe this is high level, but the city of Cincinnati's, the Cincy Insight page for COVID data says our positivity rate today is 5.3%, not three. So I'm just curious if we're using the same, like, if I'm using the wrong information, or if we're presenting something that it's already spiked. I don't, I just want to get clarity.
Sarah?
I'd be happy to compare what you're seeing, Mr. Morosky. What we get is a report every day, and it's through a consortium of Hamilton County Health Department, Cincinnati Health Department, Cincinnati Children's, and the Health Collaborative. And they compile the report and send it to us through email every day. So I will compare what you're seeing on the dashboard and find out what the different measure is.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of clarifying questions. I was happy to see the chart that summarized sort of the reporting by districts, especially given any consideration to open up athletics. So my question is, how long does it, tell me again what the, how long does it take to report the numbers of a confirmed case? Say we were engaged in sports, and someone on a team, or our team, was confirmed, and we reported, how long would it be before the other school or other district would know that they've been exposed?
Sarah, do you have a response to that question?
The new order from the governor is within 24 hours, we're required to report that to the affected families.
Okay. Okay. And this may sound like a dumb question, but for me, it's not. Is there any rules around Ohio athletics that says they couldn't wear masks? Some, I was talking, you know, I, you know, people talk about that, and people say, well, they can't play the sport without a mask. I don't understand that. But, but is there anything that says they shouldn't or can't?
I'm going to ask Dan to jump in here, because he's done a lot of work on athletics.
You know, I don't think there's anything prohibiting them from wearing masks. And there are some players that have worn like gaiters that they can bring up over their face. There's not a requirement during play, while the athletes are engaged in play, to have a mask on. There's not a requirement during play while the athletes are engaged in play to have a mask on.
That might, well, I'll wait until the discussion part, but that's a strong consideration for me. Also, then my last question is regarding the digital academy. I saw a way on the slide that says CDA is open for enrollment. Okay, so let's say if the decision tonight is to go back to school blended model, but there are families that chose not to come back. CDA is enrolling, so we're expanding to build capacity in there for those families who do not want to send their kids back?
Yes, once a decision is made, we can open up CDA and give a window of time for families to enroll. And the only reason I say a window is because we have to be able to know how many kids are there to really gauge our staffing needs. We are keeping it open now, especially to new families, and we would never turn away a family. But we're trying to get a good gauge of how many staff we need to continue to add there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You've answered my questions. Any more clarifying questions before we move on? So we're going to have the hearing of the public, and then we're going to open it up for board discussion. Okay? All right, so we're now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. Consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference called to include opportunity for public comment. Here are the specific instructions for participation in hearing of the public. Members of the public who wish to speak during the board meeting must send a request by clicking on the hand icon on your screen. That should have happened within the first 10 minutes of the meeting. Treasurer Wagner, with assistance from Daniel Hoing, will be the timekeeper and will make every effort to call each speaker in the order received. Once the request has been granted by Ms. Wagner, you will, I'm sorry, by Mr. Hoing, you will receive a notice on your screen. Click yes to go interactive. If you do not want your video active, please disable the video camera icon. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the buzzer goes off, your two minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all of those listening in. Thank you for your cooperation. Okay. Are we ready now?
Yes, ma'am. We have over 50 speakers this evening. So our first speaker is Jerome Belcher. Go ahead, Mr. Belcher.
Yes, good evening. Just wanted to say again, thank you for the opportunity. First of all, I'd like to see if there's any way that I can get that flow chart re-discussed on what the, for the contact sports, namely the football. But to my knowledge, the OHSAA has no jurisdiction over what the district would decide. So therefore, there are no rules that says these kids have to wear masks. More importantly, I think the numbers dictate that since the beginning of the summer, all the confirmed cases were at the beginning with a few recently here, but not enough to justify banning all sports. And again, will these kids deserve to play? The numbers justify it, as you've already read. So at this point, I don't see any reason why you guys will not allow them to play. But yeah, we're here. We thank you for your time, thank you for concerns. But let these kids play. They've done the work. It's evident, and you can't hide behind the COVID anymore. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hoing, we have a couple of people who are visual. Can we ask that people disable their visual until they're called on, please? Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Yes, ma'am. The next speaker is Shona, followed by Mandy Carroll, and then Mr. Rosen. Go ahead, Shona.
So Walnut Hills High School has a lot of out-of-district students, and approximately 3,000 students.
I'm sorry, Shona. Excuse me, Shona. We're going to start, we can't hear you. I'm not quite sure what the problem is, but we want to be able to hear you clearly. Go ahead. I'm having trouble. Is anybody, can people hear her?
Yeah, I can't hear either. No.
We can't hear you. Okay.
Okay, great.
Are you there? Okay.
Yeah, it's keep, you guys keep muting me remotely. It says Walnut Hills has a lot of out-of-district students with about 3,000 students. And this poses a huge risk of exposure with students coming from different counties, different parts of the communities and several communities. So do you guys think this will pose a huge or even a risk at all? And at your last meeting, Julie Sellers expressed the lack of transparency with the board. If CPS doesn't take care of their employees, how could we trust the information that you guys are giving us just to send our kids in? And of course, like Mike Morawski said, people are getting different reports on COVID updates. However, you guys always seem to report something that favors, you know, whatever your agenda is.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Mandy Carroll, followed by Mr. Rosen, followed by Ashley P. Go ahead, Ms. Carroll.
Yep, I'm mute. I'm mute.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, I'm mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you for letting me speak. I have two kids in CPS. One is third and one is ninth grade. With the remote learning, we were very nervous to take it on. And now we're finally hitting our stride and really getting into the groove. Both my children are expressing extreme anxiety about coming back with COVID. They feel like things are finally better. And what we've seen, I think, across the nation with schools that have reopened within weeks of going back, we've seen schools in Chicago and North Carolina and Florida suddenly shut down with children and teachers and all kinds of staff members getting ill with the sickness. And then everybody has to close and go back. So they're experiencing a lot of anxiety. I'm worried personally, and I know that I speak for some of my friends with children in CPS as well, that this is going to be really disruptive after getting everybody onto the virtual learning, you know, into that schedule as well. You know, there's been, it's been a real delicate balance between work scheduling, doctor's appointments, things like that. You know, my oldest has, you know, a couple of different appointments we have to go through. This has been a big thing between my husband and our, you know, our third child, who is in Fairfield. There's a lot going on to balance all of our different things. And now to do this A, B, and everything, it's going to have to be all back to the drawing board and then to have to find ways to mitigate that with other caretakers, people that, you know, we have in our families who help us, who may be highly vulnerable, at risk, older people that we may be, you know, coming into contact with. Someone mentioned the gaiters.
Ms. Carroll, Ms. Carroll.
My concerns.
Ms. Carroll, your two minutes are up. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Mr. Rosen, followed by Ashley P. Go ahead, Mr. Rosen.
Greetings, President Jones, board members, Treasurer Wagner, Superintendent Mitchell, and those watching. For those who might not recognize me, my name is Craig Rosen, and I am a proud CPS parent of a seventh and 10th grader at Cincinnati Public Schools. I'm sorry, at Spencer Center. Throughout this pandemic, I have had various opinions on how to best transition forward, yet I've remained relatively quiet because I believe in our district's leadership. Similar to the faith I have in my children's teacher and staff to educate, I know that CPS is making the best informed decisions possible to ensure the safety of our district's students, teachers, staff, and partners. Doesn't mean I support every decision or position. Like many others, our family is struggling to stay current. We have some SEL concerns, but overall, we're amazed by the dedication and preparation of our school's teacher and staff in these trying times. However, at the last board meeting, I thought it worthy to share some positivity and a concern. As other board members have previously mentioned, I'd like to give a big shout out to Student Learning Services and Director Shelley and her staff, including volunteer initiatives of Athletic Director Harden and his staff. Throughout the pandemic, my family has volunteered, utilized, or supported various CPS sites, dispersing student meals, including JP Parker, Evanston, and Rockdale Academy. In particular, I'd like to thank Tom and Sally Morehouse and Sandy Singh of John P. Parker who have constantly gone out of their way to support the Madisonville and surrounding communities. I also want to share our appreciation of the extensive CPS partnerships to support our district, including Last Soup, PPB, Madlaman CRC, Taste of Belgium, O'Payo, and many more. While sometimes there have been issues with supply and demand, overall, the program has been a godsend for many. With the new ability for all CPS students to receive weekly breakfast and lunch at every school site, I cannot imagine the complexities involved. Lastly, at the previous board meeting, the city's property tax working group was mentioned, and the idea of possibly supporting of the city's residential improvement program from going from three residents to four or even more. Like other CRAs and abatements in Cincy, residential abatements offer little oversight engagement. Please do not consider this as a viable option to support. There are better practices and policies to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Okay, just for a moment, I'm going to recognize the superintendent.
I just wanted to be able to clear up for everyone the data that Board Member Morawski mentioned that was also mentioned by one of our callers. And so I'm going to ask Sarah Trimble Oliver to come on board because what we want to make sure that we are doing is we have a level of transparency to share the data that we are receiving. We are in no way, shape, or form manipulating any of the data. So Sarah, would you please provide a response to the data that Mr. Morawski had compared to what you shared?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to clarify. When I did check the city's dashboard, which is there on their homepage of the dashboard, it does show a positivity rate of 5.3%. If you hover your mouse over that value, it says that is the value as of August 24th. And so our data that we showed earlier is as of September 13th. And just if you're concerned about the legitimacy of the data that we presented, you can actually click on the link, if you're looking at their dashboard, click on the link on the left that said COVID measures to inform school planning, and then you'll see the more recent positivity rate there.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, President Jones.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hoing?
Yes, our next speaker is Ashley P., still be followed by David Brenner and Nikisha. Go ahead, Ashley.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. And we're a couple of days away from a month, so I would like to know a little bit more about that, more data on that. Also, last week, over 18 parents and students reported to me the lack of food at the distribution centers and how hard it was to get that replenished, even though it's a good thing. There are, you know, some, also, it was mentioned that there's a regional justice committee. What exactly are they doing? Because they're not giving out any justice unless it's just that long. Also, yeah, that was crazy, wasn't it? Can I request some time with Mike or other people on this committee? I feel like Carolyn at this point, I'm a bit fuzzy about the policy and the direction for where parents can go if they have concerns or complaints to be addressed and not, you know, just thrown anywhere because nobody knows where they're supposed to go, not even Carolyn. Oh, my God, that's nuts. And just one more, I think, the district teachers everywhere, not just with the COVID. And Julie let us know that. Also, remember, election time is right around the corner. I see a lot of energy has changed since the last meeting, but you know, there's a lot of heads on the chopping block. We would like to work with you guys, not against you guys. So if we can get some help, I can drop my email, or you guys can find me. However, I just want to get some things cleared up because it's always like Carolyn said, you know, we don't know where to point people at, not the students, the teachers, anybody. No one's taking care of anybody here except you. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, our next speaker is David Brenner. Mr. Brenner will be followed by Nikisha and then Laura Jost. Go ahead, Mr. Brenner.
Hi, thank you very much for the time. I want to start off on a positive note. The difference between Q4 and this quarter is night and day. We have had a much more positive experience getting assignments from our students, getting communication from the district, getting communication from the principals at our schools. I have four kids across two different schools in the district, and it is consistently better. So thank you very much for doing that. I think everybody wants our kids to be back in school. I don't think anybody wants to have all of our children at home, right? Being in school is the better learning environment. However, we do have, you know, a global pandemic with long-lasting health effects. The data is interesting at best, and depending on how you slice and dice the data, either it looks really good, it looks really bad. And I don't think it's worthwhile to risk the lives of our students, our teachers, our families in order to rush students back into school, in order to open up sports. Districts and colleges across the country have had serious resurgences when they open. And we don't want to be another statistic. Please keep our children safe. Please keep our staff and families safe. Keep us out as much as we can until it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, our next speaker is Nikisha, followed by Ms. Laura Jost. Go ahead, Nikisha.
Hello. I wanted to originally get on here to share the many different issues that we have actually had with online learning. But honestly, I feel like that would be a waste of time. So I simply wanted to say, please, 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 give back the parents' right to decide how our children should be educated. If I want my child to go online or to private school, if I want to homeschool them, I have those options. But living in CPS district means I cannot send them in person to any school except for a CPS school. So I'm asking that you consider asking both teachers and parents via polls because I know quite a few teachers who have expressed that they would much prefer to be in a classroom teaching versus the online option because students are not getting what they need. It's very stressful for them. It's stressful for the teachers. And then just to see where we as a district stand on that because I feel like we're going to find that a lot more people wants to be in the classroom versus the online option that you're giving. There's just, it's not, it's very inconsistent and just there's not communication. There's back and forth with the schools. And like my sister is a single mom of five children, and it's just, it's been, all of it altogether has been very stressful. And then I had spoke on here before requesting that students with IEPs, regardless of where the general education population ends up, it's really, really important for students with IEPs, they're in school learning on a daily basis. So I just ask that you provide the protection equipment that the teachers need and the staff need so that way they feel safe in returning to help our most vulnerable population of students. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Laura Jost, followed by Betsy Sunderman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. I will be brief. First off, thank you for this evening, and thank you for everything that's happened in 2020. I have to be brief, so I only have two minutes. First off, my concern is echoing what First off, my concern is echoing what Mr. Messer and which Mr. Morowski mentioned earlier, I am concerned that Labor Day was only seven days ago, so that the numbers we're looking at may not be as accurate and as up-to-date as we need. I am a proud CPS alum 32 years ago and proud CPS mom of a 10th grader at Walnut. My kid loves Walnut. My kid doesn't love high school, but loves Walnut. I'm sorry, I thought it would not be emotional, but I am. And they didn't want to do online learning, but they've been doing really good. And I'm really concerned that the disruption and the anxiety of going back to even hybrid learning is not an okay. I'm not confident that the, that the security measures at Walnut can actually fit the needs of trying to contain this, that the air filtration system is not good enough, that the building is just too big, that there are too many bodies, even with, with, you know, spaced out. And I'm concerned that distance learning and going to the virtual academy, they will lose everything that they've done, and that the disruption will be... It took them weeks to get on board, and now it's gonna be two more weeks to learn how to do hybrid, and then two more weeks to try to figure this out. And then what if we have new, new numbers, and then they have to go back to... The whole semester will be, be gone, and I'm concerned that my kid will not be able to do the AP US History that they, that they're doing, that study botany, to do Art II, to do advanced journalism. This is their third year of being on Chatterbox staff if they go and are forced to go into a digital academy, because I'm not convinced that Walnut's facility is safe enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Betsy Sunderman, followed by Luke Blocher, followed by Paul Zladek. Go ahead, Ms. Sunderman.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. My name's Betsy Sunderman. I have a 2nd grader at Dater Montessori, Dater Public School, but the virtual instruction is not good. It's not adequate. We've had a lot of connection issues. We missed my daughter's first map test today, even though for 45 minutes, we were talking to the teacher, the school, the IT helpline, we couldn't get her logged in, so she missed it. That wouldn't have happened had she been at school. Schoolology is super confusing. None of my parent friends at Dater can figure it out. It's so confusing. My 2nd grader is expected to do packet after packet of reading every day by herself. She can't really read yet proficiently. She's asked to do word problems in math. She's asked to do elastic magazines and answer questions. She can't do it. She can't read well enough. It takes constant interaction from a parent for her to do well in school. And with two working parents in my family, that doesn't work. The only people advocating for virtual school that I've talked to have a stay-at-home parent or a parent who can work from home, and we're not in that situation. The CDC says that education is better in person, that we have to protect kids from neglect and abuse. The neediest kids at Dater Montessori have not logged on. I'm terrified for them. We need teachers' eyes on these children. It is not safe for them. There are other factors to consider besides the risk of COVID. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Luke Blocher.
Thank you all very much for the time tonight and for your service on the board and for your attention to this problem, or challenge, I should say. I want to say first that I do appreciate that you all framed this up over time as a, as a response to data. You have published that data, you've shared that data, and as the superintendent put forward in a report, the data has continued to get better. And so I think that you should follow the data, and I appreciate that you've done it that way. I think the superintendent listed it as three out of the four data points are improving. I think it's probably better, more accurate to say something like 3.9 of the four, given that the one data point that was not succeeding was having eight of nine days be downward trending in the previous 14 as opposed to nine of nine. I think that's pretty powerful numbers, and I think that if we dug into those numbers, we would find that the only negative data trend comes from the turn of students to campus housing, or at least can be closely attributed to that. And that's a pretty isolated effect there that we, that I think can be considered separately. I think that I'm a parent of two kids at the Clifton area neighborhood school, and I've spent a lot of, I'm on our LSDMC, I've spent a lot of time with our back-to-school plan, and I have a lot of faith in it. And I think that if you all, you know, I think schools and CPS can do this. I think they can adjust, they can put plans together that address this well, they can put plans that allowed for adjustments as things move, as things change, as move forward. I think that involves you all empowering those schools to do that. I, for one, as one parent, have faith that institutions in the district can do that right, if they're given the, given the authority and the ability to do it. They're doing amazing work right now. They really are. The teachers and the administrators at our school, I can't ima, I can't be more grateful for the work they're doing, it's exceeded my expectations, but I don't believe it's sustainable for them, I don't believe it's sustainable for many, many, many families in this district, and I think that we need to...
Thank you, Mr....
Return. Thank you.
Thank you. You have to unmute, Daniel.
Sorry, you'd think I'd have gotten that. Our next speaker is Paul Zladek, followed by Levon Slier, followed by Jared Caesar. Go ahead, Caesar. Go ahead, Mr. Zladek.
My name is Paul, and I'm a Cincinnati Public School resident, and I come to you tonight about a very serious safety concern that I kind of found out through the back door, but want to bring to your attention. The main issue at hand is that CPS has adopted a policy to offer public metro transportation for CPS residents as the legal mode of transfer for children as young as first grade. And I will repeat that, as young as first grade. I've, I've tried to address this issue through multiple avenues, getting all the way to Mr. Lauren Johnson, the Director of CPS Pupil Transportation. He confirmed this policy, that children as young as first graders is a, a legal form of transportation. I'm not here to dispute the legal merits of that, although I have my doubts, but pointing out that this, even if you legally can do it, does not mean that you ethically should. Public metro is not a real option for families. And right now, there are real families in private and charter schools dealing with this. I talked today to Mr. Jeff Isar, the Principal at St. Clement's Elementary, and he has real students that have only been offered public metro, and understandably, the parents have denied that. I will point out that these are children sometimes in challenging socioeconomic situations, and was brought up earlier in the board meeting about looking at possibly racist policies. I will point out that quite a few of the children that were not offered yellow bus service and only pep public metro were children of color. The public metro for any child as young as first grade is not a real option. If I were to put my 3rd grader on a public metro to go get ice cream downtown, I would probably have a Child Protective Service person at my door. This is simply not okay. I've addressed it all the way to Lauren Johnson, the Director of Pupil Transportation, and it fell on deaf ears and continued to get the same response, because it's legal, it's okay. This is simply unacceptable. I do understand there's COVID constraints, however, CPS can provide...
Thank you, Mr. Zladek. Thank you so much.
Can I please provide my...
No, your time is up. Thank you. And, and I would like to ask our audience, just to be courteous, you are certainly welcome to do your visual on, on line, but please, we'd rather see your face, not your feet. Thank you.
Yes, our next speaker is Levon Slier, followed by Jared Caesar, followed by Ryan Winstrop Moore. Go ahead, Mr. Slier.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. You can't get my name right, though, Daniel. This is like the fourth time I've called in. It's Levon Siler, but that's all right. It's cool. So I am actually here at the Ronan Education Center tonight. I wish you all were too. I think it's beautiful that you guys have the, the choice to work from home versus come into a building to work as the teachers were required to. But I'm gonna go with this. I actually have big concerns about the CDA. My kids aren't going back to CPS this year. You know, you're not gonna convince me that your safety plans and your hygiene theater are actually effective. School-specific subjects that my kids have at their three schools. I have three different kids at three different schools, and, you know, a couple of them are doing foreign language stuff, they're doing art stuff, et cetera, sort of, you know, to the same point that Laura had made earlier. So I would be happy to keep them in district if, if CDA would actually have that, if indeed it does go to hybrid. The other question that I, I just, the other point that I wanted to make is, yet again, when I was talking about the hypocrisy of the board and the administration being at home, when you're talking about our kids going back to school in two weeks, is preposterous, but also that...
He looks like he disconnected.
I think so. Our next, our next speaker is Jared Caesar, followed by Ryan Winstrop Moore, followed by Jessica Powell. Go ahead, Mr. Caesar.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. I want to thank the board. I want to thank, I'll be remiss if I didn't thank my CFO, President Julie Sells, for leadership, as well as the hundreds and thousands of employees who are working for CPS. I want to say a special thank you to School Board Member Ryan Messer, who has helped me tremendously. I am a CPS teacher and a CPS parent. All of us wanted to return to a sense of normal. I know firsthand the technical difficulties of learning virtually and teaching virtually. However, it is important to note that due to this global pandemic, there are many health risk factors for our young people. As a matter of fact, I have spoken with several brave teachers who are still having the effects of COVID. This is not something that will go away in two weeks, and I would like for you all to really reach out to those individuals who have COVID. They are some resilient people, and they can explain to you some of the complications that they have felt. Honestly, I do want us to return to a sense of normal, have our students in school. However, I do feel with the upcoming flu season, and with the upcoming season of illnesses, it would be best if we wait a little longer until it's safe. No one wants our students to return more than myself and my colleagues. However, not every single building has the space to do six feet of social distancing safely. So I ask you all to please consider your decision as far as the safety for our students and for our families, and to make sure that all employees and all students and families are safe. And before I end, I would like to end with this quote, if I have some time, I want to make sure I'm under my two minutes. This is from Mr. Rogers. He said, "There's no normal life that is free of pain. It's a very wrestle with our problems that can make..." That can be the impetus for our growth. I believe we collaborate and work together, we can get through this, and we will be able to be successful, protect our students, our families, and our employees. Thank you very much for your time and for your transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Winstrop Moore, followed by Jessica Powell, followed by Yusuf Manir.
Hi, thank you very much. The first thing that I really want to say that's the most important is, I want to say thank you so very much to our staff, to our administrators, to our teachers, because you are going above and beyond to make sure our kids are educated and cared for and feel loved, and I just cannot say thank you enough, especially to our amazing Kilgore teachers. You are the best. I want to say thank you to the superintendent and her team for doing the research and presenting the data. I, as a parent, feel very secure in the decision that the superintendent will make based on the data provided, and I appreciate that you're making a decision based on data and data alone. I've heard a lot of people speak tonight talking about their individual experiences, and while it's important to hear from people, I would hope that CPS makes a decision moving forward based on data and what's best for a group as a whole versus an individual, and we're a really big district. I'm not gonna say anymore, because there's a lot of us, and you don't need to hear the sound of my voice anymore, but just thank you, thank you again for everything you're doing, for taking your time, doing the research, and for educating our children.
Thank you. And, and I'm gonna ask again, just to remind the audience, please don't enable your visual until you actually get called up. We want to give our attention to the person who is speaking at the time. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker, another reminder, actually, is that in order to have signed up to speak at tonight's meeting, you need to quest within the first 10 minutes. We have a number of folks who have requested recently, and I just, I wouldn't want you to wait and think that you were gonna have the opportunity this evening. Our next, yep, our next speaker is Jessica Powell, followed by Yusuf Manir. Go ahead, Ms. Powell.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jessica Powell, and my husband and I send our three kids, who are ages 6, 4, and 4, to Gamble Montessori Elementary. I am one of 99 other CPS parents who sent Superintendent Mitchell and the school board a letter last week that outlined our concerns with remote learning and urging that CPS transition students back into the school building. I thought that Superintendent Mitchell's and the staff's presentation tonight was informative and thoughtful, and her recommendation to return to school is a welcome one. I do think it should go further. I would really, really urge that we consider a return to four days a week instead of a two, three hybrid model. We've entered our third week of remote learning, and despite the best efforts by administrators, teachers, families, and students, it is abundantly clear that remote learning pales in comparison to in-person education. And you might hear from some more advanced students, students at Walnut, that they're getting the hang of remote learning. Ask any parent of a four-year-old or a six-year-old how remote learning is working, and I guarantee you're gonna get an answer that it's not. So I think that we need to stop pretending that remote learning is working, and even if we have to gradually go back into the pool through a hybrid model or, or do something else, I mean, let's quit kidding ourselves. Remote learning is not working for most of these students. And are there risks to returning to the school building? Of course there are. But the districts in the schools have spent months developing a safe reopening plan to mitigate risks. I'm on my kid's LSDMC at their school, and I trust my kids to return to school safely. And the other thing is, the risks have to be weighed against the hardship to students and families if we keep our kids at home. And so for these reasons, I'm asking the board to return kids to the school four or five days a week at, at a minimum, some kind of hybrid model. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Yusuf Manir, followed by Eric Tapp and Judy Foster. Go ahead, Yusuf Manir.
Hello, I am back again, and boy, do I have words for everyone here. First things first, the organization that the school board was talking about, that had been emailing the school board regarding concerns about the anti-racism plan, was the one that I lead, Young Activist Coalition. We're a group of students across the greater Cincinnati area, and we're concerned about the fact that there is little to no implementation plan in the plan, as well as the fact that it doesn't even mention the fact that the school board actually wants to increase policing in schools, a demand that they claim represents the demands of students, actually made by a small group of students that are claiming to represent thousands and thousands of students, but were not elected by students, were not chosen by students. Most students I know don't even know what Speak Up, Speak Out is, and it's especially problematic when this is a district, these students were chosen by the district and are in some way or another already involved with the district. Moving on from that already, we would like to demand that you, the school board, the superintendent, and any other relevant members come on a live Q&amp;A with Young Activist Coalition to talk about this anti-racism plan and the problems that the, the whole community has with it, and answer our questions instead of just listening as you do on these meetings. Secondly, the thing that I really want to talk about is this plan to return to school. I agree with the person who went before me. We should stop kidding ourselves. Things are not normal. COVID is not normal, and this risk that she's talking about that will be mitigated still means that there will be kids that get COVID, and especially kids who can't afford healthcare, who are lower-income students, who are, in particular, Black and Brown students, will suffer the most by going back. I understand that people want football back, but that is not worth the lives of my friends and all of my teachers and our school administrations. And this decision is extremely irresponsible, and it is irresponsible to pretend like we're in a normal moment in history. We, we cannot do anything less than do what will protect the most of our, most of our students.
Thank you.
That is what we can, to keep remote learning present, even if some kids have to go back.
Daniel, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Tapp and Judy Foster. Go ahead, Mr. Tapp and Ms. Foster. Yep, thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Tapp and Judy Foster. Go ahead, Mr. Tapp and Ms. Foster.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So thanks again and we have some very good news for the board and the parents tonight. It was interesting comments to hear, so hopefully we can be useful. We're here to let you know that technology is here to help you guys reopen safely and efficiently. Group fever detection is available right now in Cincinnati Market for your consideration. There is no need for lines, no delays, no traffic flow interruptions. Just school as usual with instant notification of any elevated temperatures to whomever the school district or the school principal decides the notification to go to. It's brand new technology and we ask to be able to present and introduce it to someone at the district. So Phyllis Davis has our information. I'm the co-founder of KTRX Testing Solution and we'd love to be able to help you guys get our kids back to school as efficiently as possible and as safely as possible. Appreciate your time and hope you guys take what we have to bring to the table in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kate Harrelson, followed by Jennifer, followed by Abria. Go ahead, Ms. Harrelson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm a parent of two small children at Pleasant Ridge Montessori and I have a background in healthcare. So you know, just want to be honest about that lens that I'm bringing to this. But we, as evidenced in the data that you already showed, we're already seeing in other schools that opening with in-person instruction is increasing cases. And if there's, you know, a lot of concern from parents around achievement, there's no good evidence that shows that staggered attendance actually supports learning the same way in-person instruction does. And of course, we want our kids back in school in normal times. That's ideal, but these are not normal times. And the risk is just too great if we send kids back. We will lose all of the gains that we and healthcare have worked so hard to maintain. And even though the data look good, the data from the last several days is still incomplete if you look at those data points. And I want to emphasize the point that Yusuf made about equity, that we have significant disparities in our community in the contraction of and death from COVID. And if we send our Black and Brown neighbors back to these schools, they're at higher risk of getting it and dying from it. And I think it's critical that we acknowledge that disparity and stay home as a whole as what's best for the group, because that is the only way we're going to suppress COVID significantly through the rest of flu season. And just again, to point out, as somebody else did, flu season is going to further complicate things. We will have closures. We will have schools shut down. So even though some parents are banking on sending their kids back, they won't stay in school. And I think we need to lean into that and understand these aren't normal times.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer, followed by Abria, followed by Ashley. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I just have four questions. I totally agree with what Kate just said, but my questions are, if we pull our children and from our regular school and enroll in CDA, are we able to keep our school spot following quarter by quarter or semester by semester? Or how does that work? Per the town hall meetings that you guys recorded and had live, are the shutdowns, are you, in one of those town hall meetings, someone said that you fully intended to shut down October through November through flu season? So I'm just wondering if that's still the case, because it seems like that timeline is pretty close. And then I'm wondering about quarantine procedures, health checks and criteria for students and staff. I have a few families that come to me as a pod right now. And already we're having like cold and allergy and typical like seasonal issues. And I'm just wondering how those things are going to be teased out between like allowing them into the building versus like having them tested and being able to return before they have a negative test. I think it's a little bit easier when it's two families versus 700. So I have questions about that. As far as Brenny knows, like as we've now learned, not everyone runs a fever when they have COVID. So the fever checks aren't necessarily conclusive or helpful. And my fourth question is, will the board meet in person if the children do? And those are really my questions about going back to school. And I appreciate the use of data and I think the data looks really good. But I think, like a lot of other parents have expressed through this, we're all nervous and we all want the best for our children. So it's a difficult decision to make, but those are my questions for board to consider.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Abria, followed by Ashley Tolakonski. Go ahead, Abria. Go ahead, Abria. Okay, going on to our next speaker, it's Ashley Tolakonski, followed by Angie Quebman. Go ahead, Ashley.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
You can, oh, yes.
All right, hi, my video is not working. Hi, so I would like to first of all, say surprisingly to me, my kids have adjusted really well to the virtual learning, shockingly well. But I really think that's partly because of our teachers are so amazing, also because they miss school so much that I think they, just any little piece of school, they're just so happy to have. So I'm in support of going back full-time. Really, I like the four-day option that somebody else mentioned before. I'd also like to point out, you know, some of the individual experiences that people said they would need to adjust childcare, et cetera. Our mantra on Facebook and everywhere else trying to get parents on board with this has been tell the children, we can do hard things. So I know that the school board will be able to.
We lost her.
Looks like it. So our next speaker is Angie Quebman, followed by Valda Freeman Carmo. Go ahead, Ms. Quebman. Ms. Quebman, go ahead. Okay, our next speaker is Valda Freeman Carmo, followed by Leslie Mooney. Go ahead, Ms. Freeman Carmo.
Hi, first of all, thank you board for making that decision. That personally really helps. Just want to clarify around for children that are in specialized classrooms. I've been talking with the teachers and I understand it's a slightly different plan, but I didn't see that in the list. And also I also have a Walnut Hills student does four different groupings, meaning that they will go once every four days? Like what's that really mean? And third, I know some of the teachers have their own issues where they can't really be exposed to COVID. Is there any way to be, throw some grace and flexibility so that we're not also going to be changing teachers? Because teachers have issues. I think if we can stay with the same teachers, that would help with this whole transition period. Again, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, Ms. Freeman Carmo, that there's been no decision, and this is for our entire audience, there's been no decision as yet. We talked about a couple of recommendations that are on the table, but the board is waiting to have discussions. We're waiting until after the hearing of the public. So I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Leslie Mooney, followed by Brandon, followed by AC. Go ahead, Ms. Mooney.
Hi, everyone, and thanks again for hearing us all tonight. I'll be very brief. I agree wholeheartedly with my friends Jessica Powell and Luke Locher, who are at two different schools. But having young children, I have a fourth grader, a third grader and a kindergartner, as well as a two-year-old and learning for these younger ages on the, on remote learning is certainly difficult at best. And as we've learned here tonight with 5,000 children, I assume across all age groups, but not even logging on, I just think that it's also a voice for those of us who are here tonight to be able to, to have the privilege to speak, to say, I understand the anxiety and the concern around those parents who want the choice to stay at home and to continue remote learning, to have to switch to CDA. And I'm sure that that will be a challenging transition for those students. However, I don't think that we can be okay and complacent with 5,000 kids who haven't logged on in the first two weeks of school. And so if that's, you know, if it's the difference between those things, we need to weigh the seriousness of that many students not having access to education and the option, as one other person said tonight, of going in person, as well as the option of staying remote. So I would appreciate that consideration for not only my students, but for the many, many who haven't even logged on yet at all, to be able to go back in person at least some amount of time. And I also second Jessica's idea that four or five days really would be the ideal scenario, both health-wise and education-wise. So I appreciate all of your consideration and thoughtfulness on this topic. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Brandon, followed by Carrie, followed by Jillian. Go ahead, Brandon.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to point out some important facts based on the data, as one previous commenter pointed out, was so important. Originally, there were three indicators we were supposed to meet before coming back and we were supposed to meet all three, not almost meet, meet. We did not meet the following cases indicator, even as it was later made easier to meet. Supposed to be 14, then we brought it down to nine or eight or whatever, and we still didn't meet that. When you look at the data, we are nearly a red county again. We do not know what Labor Day will bring. After all, the part of the dashboard about informing instruction says, but four of the seven indicators lag days or weeks behind new infections. Then there's the fact that the last two indicators brought up have never been discussed previously. There's the fact that comparing CPS to Mason and Indian Hill is ludicrous. There's the fact that the testing requirement was incredibly unscientific. It includes tests taken at the beginning of June. In other words, we don't really have an idea of who is infected now. We cannot rush opening only to have to go right back to virtual because we rushed it. Finally, as an English teacher, I would be remiss if I didn't point out the irony that if you do not feel comfortable making this decision in person, how can you feel comfortable with making the decision to make teachers and students be in person? We've really got to think about this and make the wise choice.
Hey, thank you. Our next speaker is Carrie, followed by Jillian, followed by Matt Bourgeois. Go ahead, Carrie.
You have to unmute, please unmute.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, Ms. Jones. I was saying good for this opportunity to speak again. I think this is my fifth or sixth meeting that I've listened to and a few that I've spoken at. That said, a few things, I think trust is really important for you all. I do appreciate the transparency you guys have tried to show, but you are our leadership. And if we have not met the full criteria, I don't think it's maybe time to say yes. I think maybe wait another week for the numbers to see if we do, in the sense that an 89.9 is still a B. It is not an A, so we haven't met the nine. I mean, you know, we have eight. So it's something to think about in numbers and since we're the school district. That said, I wanted to know what are teachers' options if going back and they are high-risk? What do they get to do save taking a leave of absence? So I feel like my son's father is a teacher in your district and he is a high-risk. So that's something to consider. I'm curious about the consistencies or the lack thereof. If we go remote, we come back, where does that leave us? And what of the Montessori model, which I've brought up before? Two of my children are on one of our Montessori magnets and I have another student at Walnut. And I'm concerned with that because if I were to withdraw my students to the digital academy, the pedagogical theory that they're used to is clearly not being taught. And the way that they've been indoctrinated into their learning is going to be completely absent from them. So that's another hurdle to cross when we've just gotten into the groove of things. Also, public shout-out to our NAM teachers, amazing, amazing work. For my third grader, Ms. Camille, you rule, makes me emotional. She's done a lot anyway. And you shouldn't put your teachers in jeopardy if they feel that they cannot serve in the way that they should be allowed to. So that said, also, I wanted to rebut somebody's speaking of the gator. There's so much science out there. You can obviously address that with your children's hospital people. As a layperson reading, you know, lots of things, it is out there, the gators are not really safe. So if you do address that with regard to your sports thing, please be mindful of that. And also I would like to say something to someone who messaged something about, the only people advocating for going back are people who have dual-parent families. I'm a single parent of three and I am advocating what best science says. Right now, we have.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jillian, followed by Matt Bourgeois, followed by Mary Ann Griffin. Go ahead, Jillian.
Hi, I have a couple of things. So first of all, we're asking or strongly suggesting that families self-report when they have cases. Are the numbers that we're looking at from these other schools also self-reported? Because I don't think that that kind of data is trustworthy, because we have to rely on people to tell the truth. Also, to kind of bounce off something that someone else said, I'm also a data parent and I'm doing kind of like virtual support for kids in five other schools, including my kids in three schools. And I think the teachers are doing an amazing job. A lot of my kids are small and it is a lot of work, but you know, we've gone down to a single-income family because that's what we have to do to support our kids and to keep everyone safe. And this whole 99 parents sent a letter to the superintendent out of 60,000 people, like that doesn't speak for the majority. Our kids are doing as well as can be expected. These are not normal times. These are not normal circumstances. Also, like, there's going to be so many problems if we go back blended. I know for a fact that they're talking about doing buses at data where they'll pick the kids up an hour after because they have to do split sessions. So kids will get to school an hour late and then have to sit in the cafeteria for an extra hour after school and get dropped off at 5:30 at night without that extra hour of instruction. So what's the point? My one daughter goes to Walnut, she'll be there two out of 10 days, three out of 10 days. Just let them stay at home because eventually, oh, everybody, I mean, the writing's on the wall, we are going to have to go back home. So why mess with the consistency of what we have going on when everything is just going to change again? And also, I really agree that we need the Labor Day data. And I think we really need to think about what will happen when there are positive cases with our teachers. My stepdaughter went to Reading last year. One of the Reading teachers has been on a ventilator for the past three weeks.
Jillian, thank you. Your two minutes are up. Thank you.
Next speaker is Matt Bourgeois, followed by Mary Ann Griffin, followed by Monique Bush. Go ahead, Mr. Bourgeois.
Hello, everyone. Thank you all for the opportunity to share my perspective. I'm the father of three children in CPS. They're 12, nine and six. Speaking today to advocate for a return to the classroom. I feel like my personal experience is uniquely balanced in that my wife is a second-grade teacher in a district that has chosen to open under a blended model. I've been fortunate enough to be able to stay at home and assist my children during their virtual learning. I'm grateful that my job allows for that. And frankly, given that firsthand experience of watching my children learn the blended model has, I think, been very informative and frankly tells me that it does not work at a certain age. My seventh grader has handled the transition incredibly well. My fourth grader, who is probably the hardest worker, eager to please, always gotten great grades, has struggled mightily. My first grader, who has always loved school, welcomes being dropped off in the morning. Frankly, cries when I tell him it's time to get on his fifth Google Meet of the Day. He just, he's not built for it. And as a parent that is able to stay at home and assist with their kids' education, I can tell you it's a full-time job and one that cannot possibly be. I can tell you it's a full-time job and one that cannot possibly be sustainable for anyone, let alone a working family. I want to stress that I feel like the teachers have really done their best, given the circumstances. I'm fortunate that we have those teachers who truly care and prepare. My concern is not at all with them. It's with the learning model, which I know, which I now know simply doesn't work for younger students. While I've seen my, my, my children struggle, I've seen my, my wife, who again is a second-grade schoolteacher, doing blended learning in another district. She's done incredibly well. We're aware of the risk she takes going in the classroom, and we had our concerns going in. But what she said is the smaller classrooms allow for plenty of social distancing, and her children are surprisingly responsible when it comes to wearing masks. Not only that, but the smaller in-person classes have greatly reduced behavior issues and allowed her to spend more focused time on individual students, as her 25-person class is now only 11 at a time. Given that perspective from both sides of the classroom, I'm confident moving to a blended.
Mr. Bourgeois, thank you. Your two minutes are up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Griffin, followed by Monique Bush, followed by Angie Quipman. Go ahead, Ms. Griffin.
Hi, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. I'm Davis Griffin. My wife, Mary Ann, is here. We're parents of a 10th grader and 8th grader at Walnut Hills. So wanted to first thank everybody, applaud the decision to go back to school. I think the, the teachers at Walnut have done an amazing job with the remote learning. So, you know, kudos to, to them. But I, I firmly believe that the kids need to be there in person. The, the statistic on the, the number of kids who are not engaged, 5,000 kids, that is a lifetime travesty in the making. And, you know, I think, I think that, you know, the primary mission of the district is to educate the kids. That is the community right there that everyone needs to be, be focused on. So, you know, I, I think this mental health care crisis is, is, is happening real time. I'm involved in a, in a behavioral healthcare business. We see, you know, call volume off the charts. And so that's, that's the, that, that's what everyone should be focused on, is getting those kids in school and engaged. On Walnut, a couple of questions. You know, we've known about social distancing for six months. So why wasn't there a backup plan? Why does Walnut, the only school, the crown jewel of CPS that needs to go on this four-day program? So I'd, I'd like to get some clarity on that. Second question, all of the private schools, all of the suburban schools, many of whom are already going five days a week, what's the criteria for our kids to go back five days a week? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is, excuse me, Monique Bush, followed by Angie Quipman, followed by A.C. Go ahead, Ms. Bush.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, hello, everyone. Actually, my sister's name is Monique Bush. And actually, Mildred Bush will be speaking for Monique Bush. I am a stage-four cancer patient, and I stay at home with my two children. Children, they are CPS students. My one student, Messiah Bush Topson, he does go to school. He's older, he's 14. And my other one is my nephew, because my sister, Monique Bush, is a teacher. And goes off. I do not want you all to go back, because I think it puts us at risk. I think it puts everybody at risk, especially me. I think people are not listening when it comes to wearing a mask and doing hand sanitizing. I don't, I think people are taking that into consideration. Education is important, but living is more important than education. And I think people need to take that into consideration. And COVID-19 is no joke. I've had several friends who have passed away from COVID-19. It's very serious. And until we get something that, like a vaccine or something that comes out, this school stuff can wait. Living is way more important than getting an education. I'm working on my doctoral now, and, you know, that's important. But being alive is way more important than that. And so I, I'm very concerned about that. I'm very concerned about how people, we are so loving and so kind, how people always want to embrace you and hug you and be in your space. And kids want to do that, especially if they're in elementary school and y'all got them switching classes, which to me is ridiculous. But they should be self-contained. The movement should be self-contained. And if everybody was going to get on board and handle business and be on board as far as wearing a mask, washing their hands, staying in their personal space, then fine, going back to school is great. Because school is my favorite place. I love school. But if you're not going to do what you're supposed to do, then no. Because I'd rather be alive than worried about ABCs, 123s, masks, and education. Who cares about that if you did it? That's all I have to say. Thank you all for all your time and consideration and for listening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angie Quipman, followed by A.C., followed by Carrie Roundtree. Go ahead, Ms. Quipman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you very much for letting the parents speak, first of all. Secondly, just want to say I do not envy any of you for being the ones that have to make this decision. I know that that is a difficult thing to do. To reiterate what the person that two people before me said is, you know, the surrounding schools are going four to five days a week right now, in-person instruction. Is that even being considered for CPS? And if not, what is the criteria for that to be considered? Why not do another survey to see how many parents actually want to send their kids back versus doing the online? We may already be at 50% or less. In that case, then why not open for those parents that do want to send their kids back? Also, I'd like to know what options are being considered for parents who want only in-person instruction? There are multiple options for parents who do not want to send their kids to school and will not be at risk of losing their place in the school that they're in. We love the school that our children are in. We have a four-year-old and a seven-year-old in Dater Montessori. We do not want to lose our place. But any form of online education is just not an option for us. We did the distance learning for now, just in hopes that it would open up. And if it does not open up full-time, then we're going to have to consider other options. So what option is there for us to be able to send our child to in-person education and not lose our place in the school for next year? Our teachers are doing a great job trying to do the remote learning for our children, but our children are having technical issues three to five days a week. Our oldest son has not been able to get onto class several times. Our, our children are having emotional issues. Again, our older son, who was a straight-A student, has gone from loving school to telling me daily that he hates school. He's angry, and he's withdrawn, and he used to be happy. And this just is not fair to the children. There are parents who do not think that the risk is as high and who know that the schools can do what they need to do to distance the children.
Ms. Quipman? I, I'm sorry, but, but I'm going to have to terminate your call. Two, two minutes are up.
Our next speaker is A.C., followed by Carrie Roundtree, followed by Jen Kramer Wine. Go ahead, A.C.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am a teacher in our district, and I believe that we should remain remote for now. First, we are only meeting three out of the four indicators, and it is highly likely that our numbers will increase as a result of Labor Day weekend. Second, the IHME model projects over 400,000 Americans will die by January 1st. Their best-case scenario is that 300,000 people will die, and their worst-case scenario projection is that 600,000 people will die if we loosen restrictions. We can't overlook the seriousness of this time. I know many teachers in other districts, and I would like to point out something that is missing from the chart showing positive cases in those districts. It is my understanding that if a teacher or student is displaying COVID symptoms, they must stay home. However, they may return to school the next day if they are feeling better, even without a negative test. What I'm trying to say is that they are not enforcing or really even promoting individuals to get tested for COVID unless they have, have been explicitly notified that they were around somebody with a confirmed case. So I imagine there are actually many more cases than the numbers are showing in those schools. Now, I would like to address online learning. Personally, I'm pleasantly surprised at how well it is going, even with my young learners. I'm not sure who it benefits if we come back for a month or even two months and then go back to virtual learning during flu season. Students and parents have finally begun to adjust to virtual learning and to their new routine. Consistency is important, especially now. I know that I will probably spend most of the time we are back teaching my students new procedures. By the time we get through those and teaching that, we will be remote again. Why put the children through another transitional time that takes away from their learning? And I agree with many others that these are not normal times. We are in the midst of a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. We are still learning about the virus and its effects on children. We are still learning about the long-term effects on organs. People are still having symptoms a month later. A friend of mine had hardly any symptoms, but months later is having chest pains. Otherwise, healthy people are dying from this disease.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next speaker is Carrie Roundtree, followed by Jen Kramer Wine, followed by Sean Kelly. Go ahead, Ms. Roundtree.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a seventh and 10th grader at Clark Montessori. First, thanks to all the teachers and staff and to the board for working so hard to educate our kids while keeping them safe. And thanks to all the parents and teachers for voicing their thoughts tonight and throughout. As a professor at UC, I know it hasn't been easy for any of us who teach to transition, and that goes double for the teachers who are also parents. It's not perfect, especially for those of us who are used to the highly social Montessori method. But my family has remained well, while one of my family members in another state has died of COVID. He died alone and in respiratory struggle. His wife is now recovering from COVID at home and grieving alone and has not had a chance to be with family. This is a terrible way to die for anyone, and it's terrible sickness, which we don't know the long-term effects of for those who recover. Three of four of us in this household are at high risk for severe infection. As a scientist, I've been following all of these data points closely. As someone else said, these are the lenses I bring to my comments, which are as follows. The metrics that were used to determine that we were safer with all online instruction for our kids have not substantially changed. One metric has solidly met the positivity rate, while others seem to have had no significant change. But remember, these metrics have only slightly changed while these children have still been receiving instruction at home and families are mostly at home. There's new research saying that the virus is proliferating in school-aged children, in part as a result of in-person instruction, even with precautions and social distancing and masks. Specific to CPS, our 7th grade and above are coming from schools on all parts of the city, which makes us uniquely positioned to spread the virus across neighborhoods if an outbreak were to occur. It's not lost on me, at least, that we're following recommendations to meet virtually right now as, as a group tonight. And therefore, what is the rationale for returning to in-person learning, giving, given this incremental and mixed change and then the absence of robust testing or a vaccine? In my view, the benefit is not worth the potential cost.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree. Your two minutes are up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Jen Kramer Wine, followed by Sean Kelly, followed by Ryan. Go ahead, Ms. Kramer Wine.
Hi, everybody. It's so great to see you. I wanted, I'm speaking on behalf of my husband, Dennis, and my daughter, Jade. We are a family that chose to move to Pleasant Ridge for Pleasant Ridge Montessori. She, Jade, rose out of Pleasant Ridge and landed at Walnut. It was her second year. So there's that perspective to speak to the lens that several other speakers have talked about. I also recently committed or completed a PhD in public policy and social change. And with that lens, I want to just say to the board, you guys are amazing. And staff, by identifying indicators and sticking to them and making decisions with those indicators, it's really an awesome public policy case study, frankly. And then my career is in education policy, supporting states and districts in making tough decisions. But none have been as tough as this. The toughest one might have been calling a snow day. So I just want to say that my heart is with you. And as you make the next tough decision and the many more that will come after this during this pandemic, echoing all of the people that have said, living is more important than learning. As an educator, I fully agree, right? Like, you won't be able to put into practice what you've learned if you're not here. So I really just wanted to come on and say thanks and, and express my appreciation for your consistency. And even the rumors I heard so far have been somewhat accurate. It's kind of interesting. So no real, like, leaks, you know? Anyway, thanks, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Kelly, followed by Ryan, followed by Kim Tobin. Go ahead, Sean.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank Tiana Amat for a really quick reply to my email to the board members, which got forwarded on to her. And then, secondly, to Justin Leach, who followed up on Ms. Amat's email with a lot of information on testing, which is what I've been calling about consistently. So just a couple of clarifications, and I'm sure board members will ask this. But if someone could just keep these questions in mind as we go throughout the evening, what that, and I'm sure there, if there are 3,000 students at Walnut, there are 3,000 sets of parents and guardians who are asking this. What is that four-group model? What would that look like? And did I hear Superintendent Mitchell talk about some sports starting as early as next week? And if that's the case, does that mean other activities could start back on campuses at that same time? For other planned activities that would take place? So that, that's really all I have, but I'm thrilled to hear the numbers. I'm excited to see kids getting back on campuses, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ryan, followed by Kim Tobin. Go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you so much. I want to express great gratitude to the Board of Education and Cincinnati Public Schools. You all have been amazing leaders throughout the COVID pandemic. And I want to apply just a little bit of grandmother's wisdom here to this particular scenario. You all made the right decision back in August. You all made the decision that sides with safety and that still permits students to continue to learn and grow without causing unnecessary death. I want to urge you to continue to make the decision that is going to be best for the health and safety of all staff, students, and faculty. When you look back, you will have to have, think, thought to yourself, do you want to persevere with the course and emerge victorious? Or do you want to destroy all the progress that you've made to start back from the beginning? Our lives are in your hands, and you definitely can make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kim Tobin. Go ahead, Ms. Tobin.
Hi, I am an English teacher. So my expertise is certainly not in science, so I will not speak on safety concerns, although I do voice the same reasons as the people before me, that it is simply not safe to return to school. What I am an expert in is education and in my students. And what I can say is that this quarter has already been shortened to seven weeks of instruction. For us to return to school, that will take a whole other week or more out of our instruction, teach new procedures to our students, where most of us are just now finally getting into a groove with this virtual learning. I can say from I myself, I have already caught three different cases of mental health issues and abuse issues in my students and reported those to the necessary people. The SEL piece of learning is absolutely happening within the virtual schools. In addition to that, I will say that the numbers that have been dated about students that haven't reported for virtual learning are similar to the numbers we see every year. I can say for my students specifically, the students that I have not seen this year in blended or in virtual learning are the same students that I saw maybe five times the entire year last year. That's simply something that, as a CPS school district, we deal with, whether it's because students aren't coming to school because they don't want to Whether it's because students aren't coming to school because they don't want to, or because of some external issue, or because they've actually switched schools and we just don't have that information so early in the school year. So to use those numbers as a reason for us to return is not viable. I echo the concerns with of everyone else when I say that living is certainly over learning, and that is coming from the point of view of an educator who stands firmly on the belief that education is the only way in which we change society. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, President Jones, we have a number of speakers who did not accept the invitation. So our last speaker this evening is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Good evening. How are you this evening? First, I want just a quick clarification that schools still do not have a budget to order anything. The only purchase orders have been through the district for purchases that were made for the entire district or district contracts. And it's really hampering many schools from being able to order the things that they need that are possible. I also think that we must have an opportunity for engagement around the budget, because we do not have a budget that anyone has really had any engagement on. And I think that is outrageous, especially at a time when we are trying to have more transparency around funding and not less. I do know that this evening, the district will be making a decision whether or not to reopen schools for blended learning or to remain in virtual remote learning. I think that today it would be premature to make that decision. Many schools delayed their reopening plan until after Labor Day, which was just six days ago. We really do not have enough data to make a decision today. Some of the comments that I have heard repeatedly are students and teachers are just getting in the groove with remote. And students have only had a couple of weeks to adjust to the virtual learning, and it's getting easier every day. I myself have two grandchildren in the district who go to Dater Montessori. One is in first grade, one is in sixth grade. And they really are loving their teachers, and they are making great relationships with those teachers, and they are learning. Is it hard? Yes, it's hard, but it is, at least I know that they're healthy and they're not bringing germs home that could infect everyone in our family from two different classrooms. Hamilton County is on the verge of going red soon. We all know that's going to happen. Just look at what happened at Miami University. They spiked with over 1,000 students in just a week. And it would be irresponsible for CPS to contribute to the community spread in Cincinnati. Maybe in Cincinnati, our numbers are lower now because of CPS's responsible behaviors of having the students in remote learning and making sure that that is happening. Teachers, when I talk to them, they are still nervous about going into the building. They, some teachers have said they feel like they are playing Russian roulette if they have to return in a blended model, because they don't feel that their school will have everything in place for it to be safe for them. Because many classes are consistently over enrolled. Some classes currently now have 37 and 38 students. And how will these classes be able to maintain social distancing? No other urban, large district currently in the state of Ohio, or probably across the country, is risking the health and safety of the students and employees in their district. Too many teachers have not had sufficient accommodations provided based on their health, and that they are still having to go into work even though they know they are at high risk. Some of the teachers have said education is important, but living is way more important than the education. Special ed has many, many issues and concerns. And there's been much discussion about students with disabilities returning in self-contained units. When social distancing cannot be maintained with students, what happens? So the K to 12 staff in the Department of Student Services may not always be able to maintain six feet of distance between themselves and students while providing services. This may be a particular concern for not just teachers, but also paraprofessionals, therapists, and other staff who have close and consistent contact with students with disabilities. These teachers and staff are considered to be in the same general risk category as direct service providers who provide similar services outside of the school setting. In these cases, additional steps must be taken to ensure the safety of staff and student by reducing the likelihood of COVID spread and by adopting additional control measures. And I do not believe these are all in place. One of the, some of the things that must be in place is using physical barriers, plexiglass or similar materials to separate staff and students from each other or those in shared spaces. This has not happened in any school. It's only happened at central office and in offices where the public is coming in. To reduce exposure by reducing daily caseloads. They do want to have their students back. They want students back, those students with disabilities back, but they only want them back when it's going to be safe for those students, because many of those students are also at high risk. They must relocate workspaces to the best ventilated spaces in the building. This has not happened. Many of the students, the special ed classrooms are small classrooms, and they're not going to have the space to even socially distance to six feet. Considering that when possible, to increase the feasibility of wearing masks, this must be done with all of the students when they are providing those in close in contact spaces. And you must, if there is any potential, and this happens in many of our self-contained classrooms, that a teacher or para or employee is splashed or sprayed by bodily fluids during work, that they must use standard precautions and have more in-depth medical PPE, personal protective equipment, and must include face masks, eye protection, disposable gloves, and gowns. That has not been bought and ordered. I can, I would like to see the invoice and delivery notice for all of these specialty PPE items, because teachers that I have talked to have not seen these specialty PPE items. Many intervention specialists have contended that they have smaller than normal classrooms, but they also don't know how they're going to be able to socially distance, and it's not possible in many classrooms. So what I would love for you to-
Ms. Sellers, Ms. Sellers, Ms. Sellers, please. I know that you don't have a time restriction, but I'm just respectfully asking you to kind of summarize and close it out.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Could you interact, could you consider, do the benefits of reopening outweigh the risks for both students and staff? And will students get more in-person learning time with blended than they do with remote? Currently, with the remote, a reading teacher could teach two to three novels per month. And under blended, it would take them a month to do that, because they are only in school two days a week. So it's really important that you are looking and thinking about all aspects before any decision is made, because it's really, I don't think it will improve the educational options to go back for part time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. So we don't have any more, right, Daniel?
That's correct.
All right. So here's where we are now. We've heard, we've heard our speakers. This is where we open up to any questions, comments, and discussion by the board. I also, I think what we want to come out of this is some clear direction for the superintendent, either in recommendation for going back to, going to the blended, which we voted on on June 29th, or staying current. So the floor is open now for discussion. Mr. Messer. You have to unmute.
Thank you. And thanks to the public, the 2,284 people who have joined us tonight. You know, I hope this is a new norm in engaging in our school district. We've had, I think this is a higher one than our most recent high. So my comments are from the perspective of a parent as well as a school board member. I don't think all kids are the same. I definitely have friends in the district who have maybe middle schoolers or high schoolers that say, this is going pretty well. In our household, we have a preschooler and a kindergartner. Kindergarten is trying to learn to read, which has been very tough virtually. A preschooler that, you know, anybody who's in this world, you have to be sitting next to them and facilitating it. Our teachers are fantastic, both the teachers that we have. But you really have to have that person on the other side. And, you know, I'll probably be blasted for this, but I'm going to say it. We are fortunate enough, I know I'm privileged enough, to be able to afford somebody to come in and even help my stay at home husband. Now, he's also taking care of a 16-month-old, but it's almost like a one-on-one. And we had a retired teacher came in, and she called on Sunday and said, it's too much. I can't handle it. It's too much. And so now we're back to square one. So my point is, I don't know how people are doing it who are in a single-family home or a home where there are two working parents outside the home, et cetera. So I wonder if there is a look for the students that are most at risk, and I think about all these kindergartners that are learning to read, and that being a significant performance metric when we get to the third grade. And so do we approach the whole district the same, I think is a question for me. I also am very uncomfortable moving forward until we have the Labor Day data. And if the data holds true, then I'm feeling pretty good about it, because I think they've scared us enough that something could happen around the Labor Day weekend. And I think if that data comes in the week of the 21st, hopefully that would say, hey, then we're good to go, full steam ahead. But I do think, you know, that is something that we absolutely have to monitor. But I just wanted to call out just the difficulty of the virtual learning for families, regardless if you have somebody at home or not, or regardless if you can afford to hire somebody in, which is not the norm in our district. It's tough. And so I just want us to also think about how we might approach this differently between the grades as we make these decisions.
Ms. Morosky.
Thanks, President Jones. Thanks, Vice President Messer, too. Comments were instructive for me, as were all of the comments during hearing of the public. And I'd just like to reiterate what Vice President Messer noted to the now 2,291 people who are tuned in. We greatly appreciate your involvement in this decision and all the decisions that we make. I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. And I'm happy that we're having this discussion now. I think it's important. And we need to figure out what we're going to do to go forward. But a couple of points of clarity that I had regarding the graphs that we looked at at the beginning. And I really appreciate the superintendent's team putting all this together for us. It was, they were great. It was good to get that update. Again, like the comments during hearing of the public, very instructive for me. But a couple of questions I had was if I was reading those graphs, particularly the one with the, all the blue bars and the, you know, the very first one. It appeared to me that the new infection rates, I'm not a math whiz, but were at least two or three times higher now than they were when we went virtual. Is that correct, or did I misread that? So that would be, I guess, for Ms. Trevor Oliver or the superintendent.
Sarah, would you like to address that question?
Just the new-
Sure. Yeah. Mr. Morosky, could you clarify which dates you're comparing?
The, if you could, the one, the past couple of weeks versus when we went virtual. So the dates that we went virtual versus like the past two weeks, it looked like the new infection rates were higher.
The, so the date that we decided to go distance learning or the dates we started distance learning?
So when we decided.
Okay, so we decided, I believe, on August 3rd. And that, those, around August 3rd, our rates are looking at, if you look at the seven-day moving average, looking like about 35-ish, and now we're at about, actually very close to the same. Looking back to August 3rd. Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Rob. So August 6th to now is pretty flat overall.
Okay, cool.
If you're looking, yeah, if you're looking at different dates, let me know.
Okay. No, 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 that's good. And then I think if I was looking at the, sort of the beginning of the actual school year proper, that's probably actually what I was looking at, Sarah.
Yes. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, those were certainly lower.
Yeah. There certainly were some around 20, if you're looking at August 24th.
Okay. I just want to thank you for that. I appreciate that. So my, my comments about her are pretty much unchanging. I was a fan of the blended model before. You know, I, at this point, I think I'm probably leaning more toward virtual than blended, solely because a couple of speakers said it, but I shouldn't say solely, but one of the primary reasons is that the students when they're on their device, they see an adult on the screen. And with blended, when they're at home and they're on their device, they don't see an adult. So while the situation isn't ideal, nor is blended, quite frankly. You know, I talked a lot about the disruption and the consistency of disruption a while ago. And the blended model now, to me, seems more inconsistently disruptive than the sort of consistent disruption we have now. But to Mr. Messer's point, obviously a challenge for everybody, no matter who they are. Another concern that I have is that the winter coming up with the flu season, what potentially could happen there? And then the forces outside our control, the state government, whether or not they want to close or not close. And then with the data, again, I appreciated the data. I do think, you know, looking at the other schools that we looked at, the demographics are not similar at all to ours. I do worry about sending a majority-black district back into buildings and people all over the city on buses. We look at smaller districts like Oak Hills, or we look at an Indian Hill, and to me, it's not really a fair comparison. And so while I appreciate all of the items presented, I do think erring on the side of caution, times aren't normal. We are in the middle of a pandemic. 200,000 Americans are dead. And it's not an easy thing to say. It's certainly not an easy decision to make. But I, at this time, would be far more comfortable remaining virtual. And to Mr. Messer's point, if we wanted to wait and look at Labor Day data, I think that's certainly sound. I don't know if it would change my position, but I do think that's a sound decision to wait for that. So I'll just pause there.
Okay. Okay. And I'm not, if, Mr. Messer, I'm going to go back to you, because I'm not really clear where, if you're offering your position now, or if you were just seeking clarification or making comments.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think we have to dig in to figure out a, what really is happening with the data. And, you know, I don't think we can make a final final until we have the data for Labor Day. And at the same time, putting an exclamation point that, you know, I don't have a survey. You know, we have people, and many of the people we become almost friends with, and they've called me outside of these meetings, who call into these meetings. But generally, it's a lot of the same people. We have thousands of parents we've not heard from. And, and I don't really know. I just know from the ones that I talk with, parents that are in my kids' schools. Some work for the district, some work in other places that are, they are struggling through this.
I know.
And I think that piece would be helpful, too, if we had some sort of parent survey that becomes part of what we do to get a pulse check. That would help me, too.
Okay.
But it's the younger people I'm really concerned about.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not, I don't want to cut people off, but I might have to, since it's almost quarter to 10. Ms. Bowers, I had you first, followed by Ms. Bolton, and then Mr. Lindon.
Yes, I have a couple of inquiries and some points I wanted to make. Superintendent Mitchell, with the idea or the agreement that we would not start sports back until we return to at least a blended learning model, if that is the board's will, is there any consideration on sports returning if we remain virtual? About like April 28th or after?
So I would say that both of these decisions are board decisions. I just offered you- I just offered you data and information for consideration. So at any point in time the board wants to decide to return to sports, then that would be the, you know, prerogative of the board. I was just presenting information for your consideration.
And I remember hearing a community member inquire about clubs as well. Are we just specifically talking, is that the recommendation was just for sports only? Because I thought I heard a Walnut Hills parent inquire about resuming the other interactive activities. Is that your recommendation?
So I'm not giving a recommendation. Several weeks ago, though, we did say that we could resume clubs through virtual distance opportunities. If you want to explore beyond that, then we're obviously very open to entertaining that as well.
Okay, I just need a clarification for that parent because I heard them ask that. And with regards to other populations of families, Board Member Messer, our special ed families are struggling extremely. Working the population, with that population, mainly in mental health, some with learning disabilities, some that are self-contained, they have autism. We have some that are on fireball fours. They are, they are suffering extremely with online learning. So to answer your question, that is a different population. I'm not sure if you are connected with, but I work closely with every day. And I work with people who work with an array from first grade all the way through high school whose parent, who are struggling with online or with distance learning. So I wanted to make that comment that it is a nightmare for them. And they have additional supports with case managers. They have additional supports with therapeutic mentors. And their families are still struggling from kindergarten through 12th grade. That's all I have, Board Member.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, followed by Mr. Lindy, and then Ms. Bates.
Thank you. To Member Bowers' point, I am interested tonight to introduce a motion that indeed we restart Cincinnati Public Schools interscholastic competitions in athletics, the arts, and competitive club activities. I think that we need to be able to do that. But that's not the topic right now. But I probably will want to bring that up in inquiries and updates. Let's just see where we are. And we, and I think we owe it to the public to show where we are on that. But I know we're excited about having 2,500 people be here with us in the, in the meeting. But just like when we send out surveys and just like when we hold other meetings at live, we have not necessarily heard a representative sampling of the children and the families that we serve. Having said that, I too am worried about the Labor Day spike. But my hope would be that by the first day of second quarter, all of our students would be back kind of at halftime in a, two days a week or what have you, that that could be our target. And that that target could be reached by grade by grade over a period of time, starting with September 28th. And the first two target areas would be, for me, would be the preschool or 100 and some preschool units. And they could, as our superintendent shared with us back in July, conceivably, because of such things as the preschool promised money and what have you, those kids and their families could almost be at five days a week and meet the standards, even the original COVID standards. I think too many, many, many of our special needs kids and their families have a right to be among the first to return if they choose. And choices is what I'm worried about here. If we only have the virtual piece, then we have limited choice. I think families deserve a choice, which means I am in favor of getting to the blended model grade by grade, starting with the youngest students, because the high schoolers can do this better than the little people can. And so that's why I would start with the, with the lower grades. And then finally, by October 19th, even with the benefit of having the Labor Day spike information, I would be able to suggest then that you would have all grades returning for at least two days a week. I think we should try that. And I think we should also try then to continue to build our capacity in virtual. Because everybody's right, we're going to be open and we're going to be closed. And we're going to be, one school building is going to be somewhere and another school building is going to be in another place, so to speak, in their, in their ability to stay open. We have to be agile. This is not going away. This is for the year we're going to have to be agile. Having said that, I do, as Chair of Finance also, and as a retired teacher, I also, and I hope this doesn't muddy the waters, I hope it helps the waters, actually, the 3-2 model that we chose and the 4-1, we kind of compromised as our goal to get there. The 3-2 does not allow the teachers to be able to do in-person and remote. They cannot teach five days in-person and still build the capacity of doing virtual. I don't think, I know I didn't fully appreciate that when we, when we talked and did it. We have several weeks now of preparation and knowledge about that. That's why I would go back to one of the things we talked about. Rather than the 3-2, I would go back to the, like, 2-2 and 1, or 1-2-2, where we can keep our distance, we can keep the COVID models. We've got the blended piece of both attending and the virtual. The other piece is that the, you know, Miracle Monday or whatever it would be, Virtual Monday, which was something also the superintendent said some weeks ago, that would allow not only the cleaning piece, but that would also allow us to have at least a 20% reduction in our transportation costs for our own kids. We are not going to be able to afford what we're doing if we don't find ways to sort of cut that. So first and foremost, I would start on September 28th with the special needs families and our preschools ready to go. I would then phase everything else in so that by, by August, excuse me, by October 19th, first day of second quarter, we have both the blend, we have the blended system and we have our kids of all grades back. So that's what I would be thinking about. And I'm happy also to tell you why 2-3 is financially difficult. But right there, it's transportation mostly and also instructionally, it's too hard for teachers.
Okay, all right. Sorry, Ms. Bolton, can I cut you off at this point?
Yeah, I'll say what I had to say.
All right. Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I do want to, I will, I promise I will get to the blended versus remote in a second. But I want to, I want to spend my time, if I can, first on the connectivity question because the two go together for me in important ways. Can I, I just want to make sure I understand the numbers. If we, what I'm trying to understand is, what, what's the number of kids who tomorrow at 8:15 in the morning when school starts are enrolled in CPS but, but are typically not showing up for class for whatever reason? And I'm, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is compare that number to what it was a year ago. Does that make sense?
For me, can you ask that question again? Because I'm not, I'm unclear about the question.
What I'm trying to say is there are 36,000 kids in the district. It looked to me like about 30,000 of them are logging on. So we've got a delta of 6,000 kids. What I'm trying to understand is as of week three of the school year a year ago, about how many kids were coming to school? Was it 30,000, about the same? Was it, my hypothesis is it's what, 35,000? That our attendance was much, much, much better a year ago than it is today. But I want to check that to make sure I'm not incorrect on that front.
I don't have that data readily available at my fingertips. It's something that we can get. What I can tell you is that to date, we've had a little over 30,000 kids engage in distance learning.
Right.
We have 4,800 kids who have taken advantage of the Connect Our Students, which I'm going to give you in the superintendent's report in a couple of moments. Now, even though we only have 30,000 who have engaged with us, that may not be an accurate representation of the kids we haven't reached because some of the 6,000 maybe are no longer attending CPS.
Could be.
All of the withdrawals are accounted for and all of the no-shows and all of the parents or schools have requested the records from us. We don't know the exact number beyond the 30 in terms of how many kids will actually stay with CPS.
Right, and that makes sense to me. I think that the point I'm trying to make is whatever the number of kids who have unenrolled, I would be surprised if it approaches 6,000 and if it's approaching a quarter of the district. And so like my, my, my mental math may not be as good as I wish it were, but a large number, 6,000. My, the thing I'm worried about is I think that in our current state, we have, we have a huge number of kids who aren't accessing any learning whatsoever. That's the 6,000. And if we were to go back a year ago, my hypothesis is, I could be wrong, but that our attendance would be closer to 95%. And so that in the, in the current world, we're just not reaching a huge share of kids in the district. And so to me, that means either we need to, we need to be clear that there's a plan to make sure we can reach that 6,000 or we need to do something different. And at the moment, what I'm inclined to do is agree with Pam and agree with Eve. Going to the blended model is going to be better, all-inclusive than our current situation. And I do, I promise, Carolyn, I'll do this in a minute or less, but I just wanted to say why I feel that way. Because it's not just that I think there's a big group of kids we're not reaching currently. But I do think the public health data has improved. I've made a real effort to talk to a number of different parents. And I've tried to reach out to a representative group from across the district. I'm sure it's imperfect. I also know that all the parents I've talked to have wanted to go to the hybrid model. And I think that the thing that doesn't, isn't, we're not talking about enough are just the long-term consequences of the learning loss in the way that's disproportionately hitting kids from a low-income background. So for my part, I'd love to see us do the blended model. I'd love to see us talk more about how we could get cheap testing available for kids. And I'd love to find a way for parents to stay remote if they choose at their school rather than having to do the digital academy. And I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
A couple of points. I'm in agreement that we need to wait for the Labor Day data before we change direction. I think that's a reasonable approach. And it's only another week. As Superintendent Mitchell said, even if we were to make the switch, we couldn't make it immediately. So it does make sense to wait for that data before making the change. Secondly, we have to get the preschoolers back. The community providers are not virtual. We're the only ones that are, that have virtual preschool. They're smaller numbers. Unless they're children with disabilities, we don't have to worry about transporting them. So I, you know, if we are going to begin a gradual, you know, opening, reopening of schools, it seems to me to make sense to start off with the preschoolers and even have them go full-time and not blended. That's what, you know, that's what the, our community partners are doing in the high-quality preschools. The line in the sand I have with the other children, and I believe that Ms. Bolton hit on this, too. But my point is, I, you know, I would like to see a gradual reopening, but we really need to focus on reading. I mean, there is a third-grade guarantee in the state for a reason. If a child isn't reading by third grade, that child probably, you know, the chances of that child's success is going to be greatly lessened. And it's really not equitable because the children that are, that have a parent to sit next to them while they are online, reading the instructions to them, really, I mean, they have the advantage. And those who don't have somebody next to them, you know, it's just not fair. And all of our children, we were up to what, almost 99% of children reading by third grade. We can't back off from that now. So that's, that's really important, getting the, what, first, second, third graders back in as well to make sure that they're proficient at reading. Once they're reading, you know, that's, it makes a lot more sense to kind of, you know, let those children start later and see what happens with the trends, with what's going on in the community later on into the, into the fall. And as for sports, you know, I, I'm all for returning the non-contract sports, but not, but with no spectators. I'm not sure why, why we would allow spectators except, you know. I mean, it's, in different times, that would be great. But I think that that would be my, my suggestion and my, my position. And contact sports, again, with no spectators. And inter-district, I'm not supportive of sending our more elite teams to different cities and even states. But if we can have inter-district competition, I think that that's reasonable and we can redo their schedules.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bates. Ms. Bowers, I wanted to ask you a question because I wasn't clear if I heard if you had a preference. Was it for, for the blended?
I was making a comment. I'm, I'm okay with the data. I think the data is what I was, we were waiting for, which is the whole point of us even talking right now. It's the same where we were, where we are, where we've progressed in our indicators. Yes, but I was also wanting to reiterate to Mr. Messer's point that he didn't hear from any other populations as to how they were doing. But he knew that some were struggling. And I wanted to reiterate that virtual learning has been very stringent. It was for the special needs population. So yes, blended learning, I'm okay with that.
But let me be crystal clear. I didn't say, I didn't hear, I said one in particular. I have many friends, two of which I know are on this call. One has two adopted children with autism. I get it. And they are struggling. Adults, yeah, but I was speaking, you know, as, as the young people's one. But I'm fully aligned to that, too, yes.
Okay, Ms. Bolton, you got, I'll, my comment, I'll let you go, go ahead.
Thank you. This is on the same subject, but a little bit of a different spin that we need to be very worried about. And it's what we were worried about in June. The enrollment piece is critical because we heard tonight that it's possible that they're doing, you know, our administration, properly so, is getting ready to do the measurement of enrollment by the end of September. And first of all, that's going to negatively impact on our teaching numbers. We have to be aware of that. Also understand that unless we are back in some form or another fairly soon, these numbers might be as low, remain as low as they currently are. And if these numbers are as low as they currently are, the contract work happens in October to figure out TAC, teacher assignment, and God forbid, RIF. So there's also another reason besides instruction and finances and choice to try to figure out what our true number might be for our, our students so that we can figure the true number of our staff before we have to make horrible cuts of the very people we need the most.
Okay, so, okay, thank you. So I'm going to share my perspective on this. But first I have to make a little short commentary. I am, I am so anxious and frustrated about this and, and... And I think, I think everybody is to some degree, but my frustration comes because it feels like we change courses all the time. Now, maybe we need to do that, I, I don't know. But it seems like every time we have this conversation, we lean towards something else. But anyway, that, that's my own issue. I, I do think we committed to making sure we met all four indicators. I think that's a huge piece of being transparent and honest with our public. However, I, it, it's not that bad, in my opinion, just being that one point, that one piece together. I would move forward with blended in a minute, given that, with, with those indicators. But I'm saying that's what we told our public, that we wanted to meet all four. I am also concerned, as Ms. Bolton stated, about the enrollment data on two accounts, the enrollment data and also the, the number of kids and who these kids are who are not connected and not engaged. My sense is it is our high-risk kids. And so that too concerns me about virtual. But I'm going to tell you something else. Families who are afraid of COVID, legitimately so, aren't going to send their kids to school anyway. That's, that's just the reality. They aren't going to come. They're going to find, you know, something else, some other way or whatever. So the reality of it is, I hate to say it, but I'm going to say it. We are going to lose kids. And I don't want to, but we're going to lose some. And, and you know, we're going to pull, have to pull some rabbits out of a hat or something. But that's the reality that we deal with. But I think that I am concerned about the enrollment. You know, the one thing that we haven't talked about is a board, and I think it's because we're probably afraid to, I think Ms. Bolton came close to it, is financial solvency. This district, the money situation is a real factor that we need to look at. And we haven't really talked about it in terms of these scenarios. You know, we keep shifting gears. What is it doing to the financial picture? I mean, Jen gave her, her presentation today, but overall, as we start making these changes, what, what, what kind of financial implications do these have? I also, I, I kind of like the idea. Let me answer a question first to the superintendent. When is the end of the semester?
Quarter.
Quarter.
So it ends early, actually, it's more like mid-October.
19th.
The 19th, thank you.
I, okay, I kind of like the idea of waiting till the end of the quarter when we have all the data, all the indicators, we know the numbers on enrollment. I kind of like that idea. I also like the, the idea of a slow transition back with, you know, as the grandmother of a preschooler, I'm scared to death for her, but she wants to come to school. But I, you know what I'm saying? And so that's a hard one, but I think starting with what, what kind of what we believe is the less vulnerable population, the, the special ed kids need to be in school. Those kids, they need to be in school. So I would support them coming back. That's a gradual entry for me after we have all this other stuff, probably before the end of the semester. Here's where I stand with sports. I was prepared to, thinking that we might move into blended. I was prepared to say, let's go ahead and open sports with no contact or what, you know, what have you. The one gentleman who spoke and hearing of the public was talking about letting them play sports. Here's where I am. We do have local decision. And if there is nothing in our rules that say we can't enforce the rule for kids wearing masks, then I don't know if I could support it. I, I just don't. I mean, if we're trying to provide a safe environment, in the wintertime, when it gets cold, they cover up their faces. So a mask is not going to hurt. So I would suggest, I would be 100% in favor of opening sports with no spectators. All sports, football, everything, except I don't like that, what Ms. Bates said, traveling in all areas of the state and all that. I think, no, I don't think we need to do that. But at least give them playing. But I think we should require them to wear masks. And they can take mask breaks, like if they're not on the playing field, they go over in a corner somewhere and take their mask off and they can breathe a little bit. So that's kind of where I am. So, um, I don't know, I think I've said enough. That's where I am.
President Jones, can I get clarification on your last point?
Which was what?
What you said, everybody should wear a mask. And when, oh, I'm thinking of a cross-country runner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of no-contact sports. I'm thinking of a cross-country runner wearing a mask. I'm just, I'm not feeling.
Let me just, let me, let me just say this. You, you, I've seen cross-country, they run past my house all the time. They're bunched up in a group. They're bunched in a group. So that to me, that's, that's no different than any other kid who is on top, you know, close to, in close proximity to another person. You know, they're out there, same situation, they're breathing the air. You know, my, what I believe is they can wear masks, but they have to, you know, if they need to take a break, there's nothing wrong with them taking a break or whatever. But I would suggest.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, and I've heard experts say when you're exercising like that, that you don't really have to wear, but I hear your point about the close proximity. Thanks for clarifying.
Yes. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, so it doesn't sound like necessarily that I have to introduce a motion about returning to in-state, inter-scholastic competition. But if we do it for athletes, we need to do it for artists, and we need to do it for the competitive clubs as well. So maybe there is, maybe a consensus that the superintendent might be hearing on that. And could I ask you a question, President Jones? The, the first quarter, we could be, you don't want to wait for the information and then decide then if we want to talk in terms of getting our, getting our preschoolers back and getting our special needs kids. We can transition so that maybe by the time we get to second quarter, we've got people back in.
Yeah, I, I, what I'm saying is, I mean, it, it's a transition. When, I want to hear the data, then I think transitioning back seems appropriate to me. You know, so, yeah. If that makes sense. So, oh gosh, can anybody summarize this? Superintendent? Okay, superintendent?
All right. So I wanted to take this opportunity to say back to you what I think I've heard. And so I've written down what every board member has said. And so here's what I think I've heard, but please correct me if I'm wrong. Number one, there is a desire to look at the Labor Day data. I saw, heard more than one board member speak about that, multiple board members speak about that. It seems that there is a consensus to returning to blended learning as long as our data points continue to stabilize or improve and that the thought is to transition to some form of blended learning at the beginning of second quarter, which starts in October for all students. But to start a slow transition after Labor Day, looking at the Labor Day data, so around the 30th of September, which is another board meeting, to see if it's feasible for us to start to transition preschool students back as well as students with disabilities in specialized classrooms. Did I hear that? Is that the consensus of the board around just the academic piece so far?
That, that's what, that's what I'm hearing as well. Mr. Lind, do you have a question?
No, I just have a little dissent on the consensus piece. I would, I would, if I'm outvoted on this, I will support the will of the board. But the 19th of October feels very far away. And that's a long time for special education kids, a long time for kids. I guess we'll bring them back sooner, but I just, I would love to see us move as quickly as we can move responsibly. And I got the sense that the administration was ready to move tonight. And so I would, I, I would like us to move as fast as we can so long as we see the kind of public health numbers that we want.
Yes.
I'm mad.
Who said that? Mr. Masters?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm kind of in that same boat. I mean, I think we, I think what I heard was a consensus to go forward with our blended learning plan. And I think it was, you know, cautious optimism, you know, just provided there is not some crazy outbreak that happened that has thrown everything into chaos with the Labor Day data. But then I see us looking beyond that at some of the specific groups that we talked about, some of the, the littles and special needs children, and then exploring beyond that. But I thought that was a little sooner versus later in the rollout.
Okay, Mr. Maraski? Go ahead.
I'm new.
I got it. I got it, okay. I think you're accurate in the consensus you heard. I would just reiterate that I don't agree with it. And I don't feel comfortable sending kids back into school buildings. I obviously will support the will of the board, as I have in the past. But I don't think that this is safe at this time for the reasons I've elucidated the past month or so, so I won't repeat them.
So you're, well, you're, just for clarification, I see you, Ms. Bolton. You're saying, and I think this is what Ben is saying, you're not in agreement with sending any group of kids in the building. Right? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Maraski?
That's what I'm saying, but I don't think that's what Ben said.
Ben is saying, okay.
No, I, I, I think I'm in favor of saying virtual. And again, the primary reason, pedagogically speaking, is that contact with an adult every day. I feel, I feel blended is a, you know, we can feel good about sending kids back, but we're not. And it, I, it doesn't make me feel good, is my point. But I will support the will of the board. And I think, I just think it's hastening.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
I, I think the target of October 19th is far away, but it isn't far away if the administration tomorrow, having gotten this framework from us, could, could be able to announce the, the order in which people will be returning. If they, if people see that that's several weeks away, but if they know that's our target for PK 12, I trust the educators to tell us that which grades need to come back at, at which intervals. And, and I think that that would be a way to make sure this early part of this week looks like we're forward-thinking and have a, have a plan. I am going to continue to reiterate, though, that instead of the 3-2, I want the administration to tell us financially and instructionally if the 1-2-2 is more doable and for what reason. And I know you're thinking. Because.
The 1-2, you mean, two days?
Yeah, two days. I mean, it's the same instruction piece, but it's, instead of the 3-2 rotating, where you have teachers that have to teach in person five days a week, we're going to lose our capacity building in virtual. Not to mention, that costs a lot more, I think, than the 1-2-2. And I, and I think that's, I, I really feel strongly about it because we know so much more now than we did when we selected it. But I want the, I'll assign it to the administration to figure it out.
Yes, here, here's the deal with that. Because we passed the resolution on June 29th that said we were going to a blended. If in fact, we looked at different additional data or whatever to support yours, it would require us to do another red vote, another, because we already have a vote on the books for that. Do you follow what I'm saying, Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
You're suggesting, you're suggesting a totally different model other than what we have before us, which is the blended of 2-3 and distance learning.
Yes, and if general counsel. If, if general counsel believes that it needs a resolution to undo a previous resolution, then yeah, we can vote on that on the 30th. But I don't want the administration to have to wait to figure this out because this, it's a huge difference constructionally and financially.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, you have, you have your hand up.
Yes, so I'm just going to provide, not an opinion, but a fate, a statement of facts. With the blended 2-3 model, within a two-week period, then children would have five days of face-to-face instruction with their teacher. If you do a 2-2 and a one-day of blended, then they have three each week of face-to-face instruction with their teacher, one being a distance learning. So you actually get more face time with your teacher if, let's say, for example, if Monday were your distance learning day and then you have a Tuesday, Wednesday group and a Thursday, Friday group. Just, just a thought. And it is completely different than what the board originally decided on. But, and I'm not trying to sway you all one way or the other. I'm just telling you about the face-to-face time with the teacher.
You just swayed me.
You're saying with the blended, they get more face time, 2-3?
If you do, if you do two days of face-to-face and one day of blended. So for example, if the teachers taught in distance learning on Monday, then they would be able to see their students through technology. And then they would have two more days face-to-face with their teacher in person. Whereas a 2-3 model, one week you only have two days, and then the three weeks, three days, you don't have anything. And then the following week, it's three days and two days of nothing.
Can I ask a question?
Hold on, Ms. Bowers was first, but that's a, that's a, well, let me stop. Ms. Bowers, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to clarify, Superintendent, with that, with, with what you just presented, how does that look for the December virtual learning? Or, or distance learning? If we did the 2-2 in one day? Would that impact it or would that change it or would that be the same? And before you answer that, the other issue I have is moving to the 19th, which I heard before of October was a concern because that is the beginning of all the flu season. So the idea of doing this transition and over all these weeks and stretching all this out doesn't look in our favor to do that because by that time we do that, we might be closed because of the, the impact or the onset of flu season. So that's the comment that I want to make regarding the 19th. That's pretty late in October to me, to span that all the way out to the end of the first quarter. But back to the first question, what do you think about that?
So in terms of like what, what could happen in November, the calendar of the school year is definitely the board's decision. And so we need to know whether or not those three weeks in between, after Thanksgiving but before the winter break, we're going to have that as straight distance learning the way it looks right now in preparation for flu season, or if you want to go back face-to-face. We, so, so that's my first response. In terms of when to go back, just a consideration, I'm looking at a calendar. So it sounds like the consensus is to go back into class with blended learning, to do a gradual phase in, to look at the data though by the 28th of September. So that means on September the 30th, which is a board meeting, we would be giving you the data for the previous two weeks, which would include the Labor Day timeframe. At that point, we would be ready to move. At that point, we would be ready to move forward with blended learning if we're able, if the data has stabilized, or actually if it has declined in terms of positivity rate and all the other three data points. But we would be ready to start transitioning some students back on September the 5th? I'm sorry, on October the 5th?
You can start earlier.
Start it earlier, so you don't want to look at the Labor Day data ahead of the decision?
No.
Can we get that before the board meeting?
Yeah.
What? Who said that?
Pam.
Oh. What did you say? I'm sorry.
Can we get the data on the 21st to make the determination for the 28th? Because that's the date that we've been presenting, and that's the date, that's like the golden day. So moving it out further, to me, doesn't make sense if we can really just get a synopsis on the 21st.
Yes, and the only reason I mentioned the 30th is already a scheduled board meeting. Yes. We can do whatever you like.
Okay, Ms. Lindy.
Yeah, I just wanted to agree with Pam, in, in offer that we could, this feels like an important enough thing that we could add another meeting, not a long meeting.
That was going to be, that was going to be my suggestion.
Great, I'll stop.
Yep.
So I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. What is the suggestion? I'm sorry.
The possibility is of us scheduling another board meeting to make the decision, but, you know, since, since the one date is too far out, and, you know, we, we want to look at the data, but it sounds like we put on the table another, a different option, too. So we might want to think about looking at that, because I think important to that is needing more information, as Ms. Bolton said, costing out, for one thing, so we might want to do that. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I, I second the idea of, of scheduling another meeting in here. I mean, it's a very small price to pay to get our district back to the, or, to the next level, and I recommend doing that in person. And then, you know, the other thing, I like what Ms. Bolton, the 2-2-1, hearing the superintendent talk about it. I think the other benefit is that, let's say it is a crazy flu season, we will keep that muscle memory of how to do virtual learning at least one day a week, and I think that that is a good habit to keep, who knows how long, just in case, and I think it's a good safety background, and I love the additional instructional day per week that they'll get every week. So, but at the same time, that still is blended learning to me, and I kind of believe that that, leave that to the superintendent and the team to figure out. We agreed on blended learning, I get that, but I think the nuances of that, you know, I think these are just nuances of how blended learning is executed.
Okay, I'm going to really move us along, since it's 10:30 almost. So Superintendent, Superintendent, are you, so I think what we're saying is, we, we offered a couple of recommendations around, well, first around the data, two, around scheduling a board meeting to review the data, and to look at the two variations that we might consider. The plan being to transition slowly, but I think we haven't decided the date yet, did we? We didn't decide the date. We want to have a meeting first, then we can decide. Is that correct?
I think that's right, but can I clarify a little, that's right, Carolyn, what you said, this one, but I want to clarify about the sports. I didn't get a clarification.
We haven't done, we haven't...
Okay, all right.
We haven't done there yet, okay? Superintendent?
My only thought is that we leave enough time to notify parents at least two weeks in advance of what our action item is. So for example, if we were going to make the decision tonight, hypothetical, we would have started on the 28th, so that we don't give them just a week time to transition, but we at least give them a two-week period to let them know what we're doing. Just a thought.
Yes, you're, absolutely. Ms. Bolton, quick.
That's why I think we could commit to the preschool piece, starting on the 28th. We've all been willing to think about that since the get-go, and, and other folks are providing it. So, I mean, that could be the first move, and we've heard in the last four meetings from the special needs families, too. But, I mean, it is predicated on some, on the, on the data, but I, I think if we start on the 28th and we do it week by week, you all in the administration figure out what's the next order of things and grades, because we don't know that, but we, I think there is broad consensus for preschool.
Okay, so the suggestion is that, number one, we schedule a board meeting, which we're going to do that right now, and then secondly, that if we start to transition on the 28th, that gives us time to notify families, starting with preschool and special ed kids. We're going to, the superintendent should be working out the logistics of that, not, yeah. Go ahead. Mr. Morosky. A quick comment.
I appreciate it. So when we come back at this next meeting, since it looks like we are going to go back, I, I would love to see if we could get a breakdown of how we will rapidly test entire classrooms of students when somebody contracts COVID, because I've never seen that plan, and I'd like to see that. Also, the preschool piece, there's not broad consensus, again, at least not from me, and if we are going to send preschool kids back, again, I'll support that, I'll support the will of this body, but comparing it to the community providers, I think, again, is apples and oranges, and kind of disingenuous on our part, because those classrooms and everything looks totally different than our kids, size-wise, everything else. So just because community providers are doing it isn't a good enough reason that we should do it. But if we're going to do it, we're going to do it. It sounds like we're going to do it, but we need to have the infrastructure ready to test entire classrooms of kids when a student gets COVID.
Yes. Superintendent?
So it's funny that you mentioned that. Actually, I had that in the presentation for today and then took it out, that we thought it was a little too much, but Children's is working out a system that they will pick up test results from us twice a day with a very fast turnaround time, so we'll be happy we have that all ready to go. But I just want to clarify one thing, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear on this. So if the data looks good over this week and next week, you want us to proceed with bringing preschoolers back and our students in our specialized classrooms on September the 28th, unless something really changes? And when you say bringing preschoolers back, am I bringing them all back, or is this the blended learning model, am I only bringing half back at a time? Am I bringing all the kids back?
Yes.
For pre-K?
I thought previously the, the conversation was that those classrooms were significant enough in size that all of them could come.
Constitutionally birthdays, yes.
Okay, so, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that my understanding was still correct about what you want. The specialized classroom numbers are relatively low, the kid numbers, that I think, but I'll double-check it that we can do that. But we will be prepared to bring pre-K and specialized units back on the 28th, unless the data dramatically changes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lindy.
This is just, just about the preschool question. We, we have kids who have been in the community centers, have had a really good experience. They've had to follow a whole set of state guidelines that are specific to preschools. Am I right in thinking that ours would have to follow all the same guidelines? So for, from a teacher's perspective, they're going to be just as safe as a different one? Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, preschool has its own set of rules, regardless of the pandemic that we have to follow, so absolutely.
Okay. So in order for us to get a, we can either schedule a meeting, like, right now, or I can get, have Phyllis get in contact with each board member tomorrow and get something on the book. What is your preference? I say let's do it now, if we can.
Let's do it now.
Okay. And, and is anybody, are people open to doing something this week?
Yep.
Wait, I don't think we can.
I think, but I think it has to be tied to the data, and if we think it's the week of the 21st.
Oh, that's right, that's right. So it has to be after the 21st. Yeah, okay. You all tell me what, what folks have, is there any, what day, are there days that people absolutely cannot do it?
What, what about the 21st?
Why can't we do it, yeah, the 21st? Maybe earlier?
Well, is that enough time for the superintendent, for you all to get the data ready and get it together?
I mean, we'll have two weeks of data on that date, and since we're not manipulating the data whatsoever, we'll pull it straight from the city's site, or the data that they send us.
Let's do the 21st. Can we do the 21st?
Mike, it looked like you had...
I'll make it happen. What time?
I would say in the evening. Can we do, or early evening? Can we do, uh, 4? 4, 4:30?
I would just ask that we...
I could do, I could do, I could do 4, I could do 4 to 5:30 or 6.
I'd, I'd just like to be thoughtful for people who, you know, have, that work during the day, because I would like to have some of our parents who might be working during the day. Could we do like 5:30?
I can't.
I, 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 I would prefer that board members be there. That's my preference.
Could I ask you, is this going to be like a regular meeting? I mean, like, it can be, it's obviously a special public.
Special?
It's a, it's a special public, but I don't know that we have to go through...
The hearing of the public.
Hearing of the public.
Right. We can do that?
Do it at 5 or so, so Mike can be there, or we all have to be there?
We, we all, it, it really needs to be all of us. Mike, you can't, you can only do 4 to 4. I think we have to go with 4 to, I think the 4 o'clock works best.
I have to be there.
5?
4.
Come on, guys, what, 4, 4 o'clock?
I'll do whatever, I'll do whatever. I'll do whatever.
4 is fine.
Fine. I'll do it, Ryan can't do it at 4, we want other people to be there 4, I'll do it later, it's fine.
You can be...
5 to 6.
5 to 6?
Perfect.
September 21st, 5 to 6.
5 to 6.
All right. And this is a special meeting, special board. Okay. All right. Is there, is there anything else regarding this subject, Superintendent, anything you need from us at this point? Okay.
Athletics.
Athletics. Okay. So, well, we, I don't think we, there, I don't think anybody, I haven't heard any dissension about, about athletics, but there are a couple of questions regarding whether or not we should have masks, whether or not we allow spectators, that kind of thing. E short.
No spectators, no spectators, and our same health conditions being enforced to the best of everybody's ability, and, and then I want to extend it to those people that are in competitive school clubs like debate, and also the arts people need to get back together.
Well, I think we made a decision a while ago that that would be slowly transitioned. I think that was an agreement.
But not necessarily interscholastic competition. I mean, because it's, it could be debate system, I mean, I'm just to add those...
As they, as they transition, so, never mind, I'm not going to even go there, but I hear you, I got it, okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowers, short comment?
My comment's always short, Carolyn. And the comment I have right now, and when we say no spectators, I think kind of the biggest conversation that I've heard from people who are playing sports, who are seniors, is people coming to recruit them. So when I hear no spectators, that, that concerns me, that those people will not be able to come and, and recruit, which is what the big conversation is.
That's a good point.
So, I mean, others, and I, and I'm not saying that our school, we're unique, but there have been people playing sports where there are spectators, they're limiting how many people are coming, I mean, maybe we could do something like that.
Can, can we ask the superintendent to work through with Josh any reasonable accommodation that might include spectators, because the other sports, they, you know, they're sitting 10 seats apart, I don't know. But he could ask the superintendent to, to kind of guide that and offer some thoughts on that, rather than us trying to do it. And, and consideration for how we practice our safety protocol.
So are you, so are you saying that you're okay to start non-contact sports this week, intra-district this week, and next week full competition, interscholastic?
I am.
Don't move it.
Yeah.
Don't move it.
Huh? Let's get it all down.
Get moving.
Yeah.
Let's play ball.
Play ball.
The last quick question that I have for clarification is, for the clubs, you're saying that you now want them to have the ability to meet in person?
Ah, no, I'm just, and, and if that's holding anything up, I'm not, I won't fight about it, I, I'm just, my issue is that if they are competitive clubs, if the, if the athletes get to have inter-district, I mean, interscholastic competition, the other folks should too, whether it's the singers, the dancers, or the, or the...
I would suggest that we, I would suggest that we follow the same process, slow transitions, looking at all of this. We got to think practically for how we do it, we can't just bring everything back. If that was the case, we'd be in school five days. Okay. All right, so, so here we are, are, are we okay with this? Can we move on? And, and we're gonna, I'm gonna make a suggestion that we bypass Board Matters today?
Oh, one of them is time-sensitive, unless you want to put it on the 21st, but Deputy Superintendent Amat needs the name for, for Mozart to put to register...
By when? When does she need the name?
He, she, he said that she will be ready as soon as we can give it to her. Like, I think it's the end of the month, and I think all her stuff will be done, but I don't know her deadline, she just needs it as soon as possible.
Good.
Question, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, the Mozart building is literally on the line between Westwood and Chivviet. I mean, and I think it would make sense to call it the same way that the Kewanians over there call themselves, and it is, you know, Rising Star at Chivviet Westwood.
But you're right.
Chivviet Westwood.
It's West, Chivviet, but so is the post office, so that was what the committee talked about, and that made a lot of...
But if, so is that, boom, it's done.
Yeah, so we just need the board approval.
I bet, yes.
Is there anybody who is opposed to that? Okay. Go ahead, and, and since, so we're okay with that, since Mag Digital Academy?
It's really, if the board is, is okay, I think the Gilligan family is, is fine with the name. I think there's a letter that Mr. Hoyn is ready to prepare and send to the family about the, the agreement or the suggestion that the superintendent brought to the family, along with the recommendation of the family helping to fundraise for the school to improve it, or enhance, be included in this letter, Superintendent.
Okay.
But I got from that.
I did speak with Ellen Gilligan, maybe that's not her last time, I'm sorry, right after the Student Achievement Committee meeting, and I did express the, the will of the board in terms of fundraising, and so she said that it's something she would have to talk with her siblings about, because none of them live here in Cincinnati, but she was open to the idea, so I'll follow back up on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we did not do kudos and retirements, and I am going to not do that, but we want to make sure that for the next meeting, especially with the retirements, Ms. Bates, if we can keep a record of that, and we can acknowledge at the next meeting. Okay, resolutions, let's, let's go through our resolutions.
Oh.
Ms. Bolton, please present the resolution.
Yes, absolutely. I would like to introduce on behalf of the Finance Committee... Uh, I would like to introduce on behalf of the Finance Committee a resolution for the annual appropriations. Uh, and I seek a second. And after we get a second, I would like this, the treasurer to explain the subtotals, which is something quickly that Mr. Lindy referenced, but I think it would be helpful. So I introduce.
Is there a second?
I, I, I second President Jones. And I'd just like to say, I feel good, Ms. Bolton, for tonight. Yeah, given her.
Okay, so it's been motion and second. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates? Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Hi.
Lindy?
Hi.
Mr. Messer?
Hi.
Ms. Morosky?
Mr. Morosky?
He looks frozen. Yes.
He votes yes?
Yes. You're, you're muted.
President Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
No, I'm not.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morosky, next resolution?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I voted yes on the last one, by the way. Um, I could hear y'all. Um, but a resolution of many board policy, 5,200 attendances, is what I was referring to. Um, the blue line, red line, uh, in the policy minutes. The red line, of course, is just standard Ohio language, um, that updates things in light of where we're at. And then the few blue lines are very minimal. In fact, I think there's only like two total, um, maybe a total of 12 words. That was our editorial comment. Um, but I present the resolution as written and hope for passage.
Thank you. Is there a second? I need a second. Okay, thank you. Ms. Bowers, uh, any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates? Oh, yes.
Ms. Bates? Okay.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Hi.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, superintendent, do you have a report?
I do, but I will make this very quick. I think it's information that you probably want to hear tonight. So as they are pulling up my PowerPoint, whoever's running the PowerPoint, when you see my arms flailing like that, just go to the next slide. All right, so we are back in school. Um, let's look, let's talk about CPS by the numbers, which is the next slide. So you can see the number of meals we've served. You can see the number of Google Meet sessions. Um, and so, um, our kids are engaged, our families are engaged, and so are our staff members. Next slide, please. So, um, to date, um, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the, you're right. So we have our Family Technology Support Center that's up and operating. You can see the phone number. So any family who needs support, 363-0688. And you can see the operation hours are from 8:00 to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. To date, we have had about 1,600 calls come into that line. And we do have this, um, we do have the service available to be able to work with parents or family members who speak Spanish. Next slide, please. Connect our students. You can see we are nearing 5,000 students who are signed up for this initiative. Um, we still have 3,000 kids to go, but we are in constant contact to try to make sure that we can get those additional 3,000 kids so that we can hit our 8,000 mark and beyond, whoever needs the service. Next slide, please. CPS TV, you can see that there are very specific times each day in which we are offering programming. Um, and so people can tune into this via TV, as well as we will post all of these videos on our website. Next slide, please. We did hold our Spanish-speaking, um, family town halls. Um, and so this is just an update on those. We hosted online virtual orientation back on September the 3rd for our families who speak Spanish. We've also provided information regarding distance learning, blended learning, grading, attendance, Schoology, and Power School. And I believe that concludes my update. Thank you, in addition to the written superintendent's recommendations.
Okay, do board members have questions or comments? All right, do I, I have a, I need a motion to approve the recommendation?
No moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please, Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Time? I have a question.
I have an issue. And I raised it earlier in the meeting. On, I have a question about, uh, on the I, letter I, promotion. Um, the, uh, it looks like an addition of an administrator, I guess, at Woodward. And I, I'm concerned for a couple of reasons. I thought we were in a hiring freeze, so to speak. But also because, remember, we, we lost about 11 teaching positions, I think, at Woodward when we had to make so many different changes. And I just would like that, just I, the, uh, and I won't say the name, um, um, but just under review, and maybe we can take it up again on the 30th. Because I, if you lose 11 teaching positions.
Okay, all right, Ms. Superintendent?
Okay, so, um, I did research this after you made the comment and between now and then. And, um, let me see if I can get this correct. The assistant principal at Aiken moved to Dater to become the interim principal, because the principal is leaving and moving back to Texas. So then we had a, an AP vacancy at Aiken. So the assistant principal of Woodward, one of them moved over to replace the Aiken position. And so then that created a vacancy at Woodward. And so this is not a new position.
But I, uh, and I, I trust you on that. But I, it's my understanding that it's one more assistant principal there than was there last year. I, I just need, I'm concerned about that.
So Paul, can you speak to that? Or Shawna?
Sure, I'm glad to speak to that. Um, so the, the sequence that Superintendent Mitchell shared is correct. Uh, in the budget at Woodward this year, they had three assistant principal positions. Uh, so when the transition occurred, we kind of just followed the whole backfill idea. So they had three assistant position, uh, positions this year. They only had two last year. They were approved for three for this school year.
Okay, so, so everybody's right. They had two last year and we're adding this year. And I don't know that we should be adding. I mean, I just want somebody to review it, because we lost 11 teaching positions at Woodward. And I just think that we, hold it or review it? It's all.
So Mr. McDull, can you speak to the, um, positions of the people who were riffed? Because many of them, we have been actually able to bring back.
Right. I'm not worried about the people. I'm worried about the positions that were lost. And it was all part of what we had to do. I'm just saying, if you're gonna lose positions, and, and I, I just.
Yeah.
It's just.
We can't, we can't hear you, Ms. Bolton.
No, I'm sorry. I, I just, I, I'm not, I think the people all got kind of moved around. And, but I know that that, that school went from seven to six bells. And I, because we had to do all of that. I just think we had to add an administrator when we have lost that many teaching positions. So, um.
So I am happy to remove it and to consider it, but I may be bringing back, maybe bringing it back on September the 30th.
Perfect, that's all I asked. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments?
Just can we get a, can we get a copy of the report?
Copy of which report?
Just the superintendent's report.
You have it. You, your superintendent's report is part of your board doc stuff.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry, the slides that we just saw.
Oh, the presentation. You talked about the presentation? Oh, okay.
Just have the receipt, copy, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Hi.
Mr. Lindy?
Hi.
Mr. Messer?
Hi.
Ms. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones? Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
No moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
All right.
Ms. Bowers?
Mrs. Bowers?
I, I, I'm sorry.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
I think he said yes. We didn't hear him.
Okay, President Jones?
Yes. Okay, are there any inquiries and updates? Hearing done. Any assignments? Lindy?
Yes, uh, this is very quick. Um, I have been very, very impressed with some of the work out of the Curriculum Department, particularly in social studies, about engaging kids with the racial justice protests over the summer. I wanted to ask if in some upcoming board meeting, it certainly doesn't have to be the next one, but in some upcoming board meeting, could we see some examples of teachers and kids who are using that content in the classroom? It seemed like it was worth giving public space to. Um, and it was genuinely inspiring and I'm appreciative of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other assignments? Superintendent?
I just want to make sure, because I captured these as next steps are assignments. So pre-K and specialized units, we're going to put everything in motion to start among the 28th. Uh, we will prepare for the September 21st board meeting with data. We will schedule a phase-in plan that's leading up to October 17th for the board's consideration. We'll develop a plan for two, two, and one, that model, to look at, um, the logistics of it, as well as the cost implications. Uh, we will work to schedule budget hearings as well. I have those as action items out of our conversation. And we will move forward with athletics this, uh, week with intra-district, next week with interscholastic. And we will continue moving forward with clubs through virtual distance platform. So those are our follow-up assignments for the administration.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Bowers?
I just need clarification, Superintendent Mitchell. I heard you say this week to proceed with intra-district and the interscholastic. I, I, I'm trying to get the clarity. Is that the same as non-contact and then contact? Because I thought your recommendation was non-contact or low-contact would start this week, and then next week it would, it would be, um, contact.
Yeah, that was.
Okay.
That was in the presentation, but what it sounded like to me from the board was to start with intra-district this week and interscholastic next week. And so that's, that's what I heard, but I'm happy.
I, that's. What does interscholastic mean? I guess I don't know what that means.
You play, you play against teams outside of CPS.
Okay, but then no going like to a state or something. But they were okay with CPS. I thought I heard somebody say that we didn't want to intermix. Was that because of like a championship? Were we talking about? Not necessarily other schools, but a championship? I thought I heard board member Bates, not board member Bates, board member, um, Bolton say that. So maybe that's why I was stuck on intra-district. Okay, I got it.
Okay, sorry. Sorry if I caused any confusion. My apologies.
You did it. You did it. I didn't understand what.
It got a little chaotic, kind of, when we were having that discussion. But I think we got it. Okay, um, any other, any other assignments? Excuse me. Okay, having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Good night.